Good afternoon. Welcome to this September 17th School Board Work Session. Thank you for joining us this afternoon. Before I turn the meeting over to the Superintendent, Mr. Bridges would like to speak briefly about our hurricane insurance and FEMA and possible special meeting.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, as you will recall, a little over two years ago, the district was in the path of Hurricane Irma and we sustained some damage. We have casualty loss insurance in the amount of $50 million and FEMA available for damage beyond that. We have made claim against our insurance carriers for that amount and we are in what they call the appraisal process, which is called for in the insurance policy. It's similar to arbitration. Appraisal is not like, in this context, is not like a residential appraisal or business appraisal. What it means is each side appoints a disinterested appraiser to come out and assess the damage. The two appraisers then appoint what they call an umpire, so they're a panel of three, and they meet to determine what the damage to the district is. And you will recall that many months ago, we found ourselves in a situation where the appraisers couldn't agree on an umpire and the insurance company filed suit in federal court and we got it dismissed, whatnot, but we've been proceeding with the appraisal process. Our appraiser was hired under a contingency fee. In other words, the district would not be out of pocket for the appraisal costs, but at the end, when the awards came in, the appraiser would be entitled to a percentage of the award. Recently, a case has come down in the state of Florida, Sanders versus State Farm, that says appraisers cannot be disinterested if they are hired subject to a contingency fee contract. So what that means, because the appraiser cannot be disinterested and the policy requires a disinterested appraiser, we're going to have to obtain the services of a new appraiser that we pay for services rendered rather than a contingency fee. We're also going to have to resolve the issue of anything that we might owe the former appraiser because of work that he had done that can no longer be used. But this is an urgent matter time-wise because we're at that point in the appraisal process where the umpire is ready to hold hearings and make awards. We need to not hold it up and our outside counsel, Mr. Stidham and Ms. Nicholson, have recommended that we have a special meeting of the school board to vote on terminating Mr. Key's contract and approving the contract for a new appraiser who can step in and would be disinterested. This is a disadvantage of only having one board meeting a month, but we need to do it before then and I would request the school board hold a special meeting, would not have to be long, with two items. One, to terminate the contract of the existing appraiser who by law can no longer serve, and hire a new appraiser who can step in using some of the work the previous appraiser did and get us into the hearing process so that we can start to have money coming in from claims. So I would request a special meeting, if at all possible, next week for that purpose.
So...
And that allows us to prepare an agenda and backup for you. I'm advising you now that we need to do it. You would have an agenda with backup on that and we could have a special meeting for that purpose. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. It's the first time I'm hearing of this.
Yes, ma'am. It's recent.
Okay. So here's my question. How did we get into this mess?
We got into this mess because Hurricane Irma hit us.
I know that, but I mean getting the wrong appraiser.
We didn't get the wrong appraiser. When we entered into the contract, we hired an appraiser that we could lawfully use at that time.
At that time?
At that time.
Okay.
There is a case that came down just in the last few weeks that says that an appraiser with a contingency fee contract is no longer, can no longer be considered disinterested.
And you might recall, we felt like the contingency fee was the way to go originally simply because we didn't have to put any money upfront.
Okay.
So, yeah, it was, that sort of came, sort of came out of nowhere.
So how much have we already spent with this firm?
None.
Nothing?
None, none.
But there'll be some money to cut the contract.
He was on a contingency fee, yes, ma'am. And of course, he would still like to get paid and we may end up having to go wrestle with him over how that can be accomplished.
And, Mr. Bridges, isn't it true that we may end up using much of his work product as well?
Yes, we may very well. We may very well.
Mr. Townsend?
I think this was made...
Oh, I apologize.
Well, if we're gonna use his work product and we haven't paid him yet, can we just change the contract?
Well, we will attempt to negotiate a resolution with him on that. Whether he's amenable to it or not, we won't know.
But I think Mr. Townsend's question is, could we continue to use him?
No, that's another, I understand that the question is, could we convert it to a fee-for-services contract? The Sanders case seems to preclude that, saying that because the work he did was on a contingency fee, that he is vested in that and not disinterested.
Then how can we use his work? I don't know.
The argument on that is because the other side has already used his work in formulating their conclusions. So we'll use it to the extent we're allowed.
Okay.
And I have, and Mr. Stidham is here if he wishes to unveil on that if I haven't covered it yet.
I think that you have. I would just add that when this issue first came up, we communicated with all the insurers. We have 12 named insurers. Some of those are actually a group of several different insurance companies typical for these kinds of policies. We communicated with them and asked if they objected to George Key's continuing in light of the Sanders case, Sanders versus State Farm, and two of them said no. The rest of them all said, we'll let you know sometime down the road, which of course would be our worst option. We don't want to go through the process and have it all set aside. That's the only thing I would add.
Ms. Fields?
My question to Mr. Bridges is if we have a new appraiser identified?
We have identified someone and what we would like to do is schedule the meeting so that we can create an agenda and bring you a proposed contract for him and a proposed item to terminate the previous appraiser. And that way, that way you would have a complete, complete package of backup. I don't want to do that today and spring it on you. If we set it up as a special meeting, we have the agenda prepared 48 hours in advance and published and you would have both the, we'll have the Sanders case briefed for you in concise terms, a proposed contract for a new appraiser, and a proposed action item to terminate the previous appraiser.
So what's the pleasure of the board? Do we, okay, are we okay with that? Yes, ma'am?
Part two of my question comment is that realizing that all of us might not be able to agree on a date and this being present, I think we need to agree that we go with the majority of the board's schedule.
If we could have, as long as we can have a quorum, we'll be all right.
Right, and I was gonna recommend maybe next Tuesday.
Okay.
Next Tuesday.
Thank you, Ms. Fields.
Particular time?
Can we have it earlier?
We can have it anytime. We could have it in the morning, we could have it in the afternoon, whatever works best for you. I realize that this is an imposition on your schedule and the reason for the conversation is to see if we can, if we can do this when it best suits you.
My question was just gonna be, I know you've mentioned next week is the October first too late or just because we already have...
It would be, our counsel is very, very itchy to get this, to get this done quickly. They actually would have liked for me to do it today.
Right.
And I expressed to them that I am reluctant to spring something that large on the board unannounced. So I'd much rather have it as an agenda item with backup.
Ms. Fields?
I would say nine, 12:30.
Next Tuesday. So what's the, what's the pleasure of the board for, do we have a preference next Tuesday at nine or 12:30?
I would only be able to do nine.
Nine?
This field said five. Would other people be willing to do just post hours?
I have that Auburn Dell dedication, the field's being dedicated at four.
So it sounds like nine o'clock.
I'm good. The only job I can do either one.
Do we have enough for a quorum?
I cannot be here at nine, but that's okay. We agreed that if we could get a quorum and...
Ms. Cunningham, is Vice, would you be available?
I have something scheduled that morning and I will let you know.
Thank you.
So the second option is 12:30. I could be, I could be here at 12:30. Is that an option for anybody?
I think I can do either.
Either one? Okay.
I can't do 12:30.
I can't do 12:30.
Okay.
But if you have a quorum.
But that's okay. If you have a quorum, go.
You had mentioned that they wanted to bring it tonight and you said no.
Oh, yes, there was...
Is that something that we could still do tonight or is that...
I agree.
Would anyone...
Do we have a proposed contract for Mr. Green?
I agree.
Yes, we do.
We could add it as an emergency item and do it this evening.
Is that the pleasure of the board?
Yeah.
We just asked roughly what that's gonna be, what the amount's gonna be.
I don't have a precise amount. We will put a not to exceed amount in it for you for this evening. What, here's what I, what we envision. In all likelihood, we're going to start seeing awards in this sometime in the next two or three months. So if we have a not to exceed amount that can get him paid during that period, once the awards start coming in, revenues will be flowing and we'll be able to pay for it out of those proceeds instead of out of pocket. So what we'll try to do is bring you a not to exceed amount that's designed to get us through the first awards. Will that work?
Is that five figures or six or seven?
I would suspect that we're talking five.
In order of magnitude, that's all help.
Five, low six?
I would think low six probably, but I'm sort of guessing there's really some startup expenses.
Let's get a solid number, not to exceed, and we'll put it in the for tonight.
Okay. Ms. Fields?
Are we gonna get that before the meeting?
Right.
We will, as soon as we finish the conversation, I will send my ace trial counsel out to accomplish that. And as soon as we have it, we will bring that to you, like as if we had anticipated bringing you a full package so that you could have that at a special meeting, but if you would like to do it this evening, we will absolutely make that happen. Yes, ma'am.
So my question is, the reason for waiting to a later date was because you were gonna have more information?
Yes, ma'am. I wanted to have a complete, a complete package for you with the contract and the brief and all the backup.
Okay. So, okay, so my question then is, it's almost two, board meetings at five, can they prepare that and give us something that maybe we could discuss here before we quit?
What we will have for you is, we'll have the proposed contract for the new appraiser.
Yes.
And we'll have just an item to propose the termination of the contract with the old appraiser.
Okay. And this would have been the same information that you would have provided next week?
Well, what I, what I anticipated providing to you in addition was a, just a brief on the matter so that you had it all in writing. I had anticipated providing a memorandum that has, memorandum of law on the Sanders versus State Farm case that I have orally briefed you on today.
Okay.
So that you, so that you were in a position to make an informed decision. But we briefed it and that's what the case says. You know, the case does say that our current appraiser can no longer serve in that role.
Okay.
And we're in the appraiser process pursuant to the contract. We have to have an appraiser.
Superintendent, are you comfortable with this or not?
I haven't seen the numbers yet. We met earlier today, so I...
I can have the rating sheet that sets out essentially the terms of the contract that are important. I can get copies of that and come right back with it.
Awesome.
And what we're going to need is a not to exceed figure.
Right.
If we can just plug in. And if we, if we start to touch that, then we have to go back to the...
I'll already try to communicate with them. I will.
Okay.
Because I think we all need to see the numbers.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry. My question was, do we already have that information? Are you just waiting to bring it to us for next week?
No, we, we know what his rates are, but we do not, but we did not have the estimate on the not to exceed amount.
I just, if you were waiting for it to not be a surprise, we could review it. But if it's not already set, we may need to wait until next week.
It is absolutely reasonable to have, before you act on it, to have a not to exceed amount.
I think you should see the rate sheet spells out what the different rates for the different actors are and it's pretty understandable and I think that it's also pretty standard in the industry. So I believe you'll see all of that when I get it.
Mr. Stidham, just to put that fee in perspective, what do we anticipate getting from insurance and FEMA at the end of the day?
Well, our estimates currently total close to $200 million. That is, we have a $50 million insurance claim and the rest will be made up by FEMA in addition, and FEMA has tremendous discretion in this area, but in addition FEMA may very well, they offset the amount of insurance, but they may very well reduce that offset by the amount that you're having to spend to collect the insurance, which includes these expert calls for attorney's fees and that type of thing. So, and in the end, this change in appraisers, we're gonna have an appraiser who I am convinced is going to work more diligently than the one that we've had to date. He's going to be devoting almost all of his time to this particular case, which is what it deserves. And I think in the end, the school board's gonna save money because while we have to outlay some cash until we start getting awards in, the other guy was gonna make two and a half million dollars if we get the entire $50 million in insurance, which from everything I can see, we are indeed gonna get that amount.
Thank you.
We'll bring it to you this evening. And thank you. I'm perfectly, perfectly willing to set it for a special and get the brief to you, but if you're ready to go tonight, we'll have it for tonight.
I just wanna make sure that staff gets to see it as well and that they have time to...
Absolutely. I was gonna ask, can we bring it at our meeting next week?
Do I?
So that we get a chance to see it and give Mr. Stidham time to get it and we're able to get the numbers.
To do it at a special meeting instead of tonight?
Yes.
At your call.
So you prefer a special meeting?
Yes.
Okay. That's fine. So again, so we'll go back to the special meeting and the question then is, I think we agreed on next Tuesday at nine o'clock. Are we, can I just see a show of hands as who could be the next Tuesday?
I think I could be there. As of now, my schedule looks good. I've only a few minutes.
I'm good.
Five. Okay. So we have a quorum, so...
So you tune this way?
I'm good.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, we will, we will have you an agenda and backup prepared to go out before the end of the week so that the budget can be, can be posted at least 48 hours in advance of the meeting as required for special meetings. And I greatly appreciate that. I apologize for the inconvenience to your calendar, but this is a big, big-ticket item and, and as counsel has relayed, we're under a time crunch to, the sooner that we can get this done, the sooner we can get the appraisal committee to meet and get the awards flowing. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. Any other comments? Okay. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. So we're gonna go to agenda item one, which is our policy updates. And I believe Wendy Dodge, I hear Mr. Hill was taking the work from the Dodge right now?
So Ms. Dodge is here with us today, Tallahassee representative. The policy updates have been reviewed. These are a review of the recommended, the updates recommended by Niola. And the recommendation was for approval. And there were nine total there. Take a look at those if you have any questions. We'll have some of our staff members speak to those.
And Mr. Chair, I know typically at public hearings, you request Ms. Dodge to come forward and read the synapses and in her absence, if you would, if you would like, I'd be happy to do that for her.
Please, thank you.
Thank you.
I know she reached out to Mr. Bridges and heard that.
Okay. Okay, thank you. We will move on to item two. And item two will be Mr. Perron and Mr. Pitts.
I haven't switched the item with the superintendent, so I don't know if you want to stay with that or go with the second one first and do budget.
We wanted to do the...
The resolutions for the...
The resolutions first because we have so fast. So we're gonna go to item three, start with three.
Thank you.
Because we have some guests with us today.
Brent Wilder from PFM. Mr. Weiner from Holland and Knight could not make it because he was scheduled for when we originally went nine, three. And when we switched the meeting, he had a fire commitment. So Brent is here. We are, I brought this up a month or so ago about the resolution that we'd be bringing and it's kind of multi-tiered and multi-faceted. So Mr. Wilder will give you an update on what you are looking at and what your options are for this evening's agenda.
All right. So we'll do our best to summarize 300-plus pages in a few minutes or less. Appreciate the opportunity to be here again. Brent Wilder, PFM Financial Advisors, municipal advisors of the school board. Both agenda items pertain to the 2015 A and 2015 B certificates of participation. Those are your two last remaining variable rate COPs that are tied to interest rate swaps. So in the course of managing your debt, the underlying variable rate COPs have certain extensions and maturities that have been rolled over the last several years. And we have two maturities coming up on those, one the end of October and then one in January for the 15 As and 15 Bs. So this summer, when we are working with Mr. Perron and his staff to prepare an RFP, the rolling of those bank facilities, as we always do, we did an analysis of alternatives. And based on market conditions then and market conditions today, it would be potentially possible to refinance those variable rate obligations, terminate the interest rate swaps, combine all of those into one or more, one or two fixed rate issues at little to no cost to the district. So that is the overarching theme behind those very voluminous resolutions. They're mere resolutions, one for the school board and then those are familiar with the process on COPs. You have the school board resolution, you have the leasing corp resolution, hence they have two of those. Credit to Mr. Weiner for doing what we refer to as the kitchen sink resolution. He threw absolutely anything and everything into those so, to avoid multiple votes of the board and the leasing corp to combine those into one. So what would be authorized in these resolutions would be the, we said, if the market permits that you could refinance, get rid of the swaps, get rid of the variable rate, replace them with traditional publicly operated fixed rate issues at little to no cost to the district, we're authorized to do so. If that were not the case, since both of the underlying bank loan facilities are coming up on maturity, we've taken a step with Mr. Perron and his staff to get the existing bank, Bank of America Merrill Lynch, to go ahead and agree to extend those so that you're not, the district is not finding itself in a bind, having expirations pending and not having the option. So both of those, I think it was October 30th was the extension of 2020. So sorry for throwing a bunch of dates at you, but if the board approved this evening, you would monitor the market. If you could terminate, get out of these things before the expiration of those facilities, staff would proceed and do so. If we could not, then we would pivot. The attorneys already have the documents drafted that are necessary to extend those facilities. They would be extended at the same price and the same terms with the bank, no increase in fees for them to do so, which would buy you additional time to continue to monitor the market. So that just gives us a longer window to potentially get rid of these swaps if the market cooperates. So let me pause there. I know I throw a lot at you and be happy to entertain questions.
So in essence, this resolution takes care of all those options based on what happens next Tuesday when the price, so we'll...
Ms. Cunningham?
Okay, so bottom line, the reason to terminate is because we're going from a variable to a fixed rate. So what is, talk to me on the financial side of it. If we stay with the fixed rate and extend it out, I mean, I know we're trying to change to a fixed rate instead of the variable, I get that, just generally common sense. So you said to little to no cost, but I mean, there's a cost because we've employed you and others to do this, so there is a cost. So tell me, in the next five years, pick a number, I want to know, what are we saving? Tell me how we're, tell me how financially the district is saving money with this option of moving from fixed, from variable to fixed with the way the market is looking today.
Yeah, I'll do my best to answer that. I would view it in terms of reducing risk versus reducing cost. You have what we refer to as synthetic fixed rate today, so you have a variable rate instrument, then you have a floating fixed swap, so you have a synthetic fixed rate today. There are certain risks associated in that versus traditional fix. One of them is the, one of the COPs matures in 2026, you have one that matures in 2028. The underlying variable rate mechanism does not go all the way out to 26 or 28, so your incurring cost each time those instruments are rolled and we're at the risk of whatever the rates are at the time those things are extended.
Sure.
The second thing that is unique in these swaps is there are termination options on behalf of the counterparty, in this case, that Citibank that is providing swaps, has the ability at certain points in the future, if they were to elect those, to force a termination that is not in the control of the school board. This would eliminate that risk. And that's why we just cannot quantify what those rates might be in the future and if and when Citi chose to do that. We do know a couple of years ago, Citi did have those rights currently and worked with Mike and his team to renegotiate to postpone that. Otherwise, we'd be sitting here today not knowing if they're gonna exercise those termination options. So it's very hard to quantify if there's financial gain or loss in that, but I can state that the primary motivation should be risk reduction, not cost savings. The last thing I would say is when we're looking at these, when I say little to no cost, that's on a net basis. Any cost of issuance associated with these, if you were to do the refunding, those are rolled into the cost of the debt and are factored into it, so...
Well, yeah, yeah, okay. Right.
Sorry for the long answer.
Right, right, right. But bottom line, we're not...
The last...
So it's really, you're looking at this simply from a risk reduction, not looking at, because I know that's rolled in, just like the mortgage, you can roll all, but those are actually costs.
Yeah. When they, when they ran the numbers as of Friday and then even a couple of weeks ago, there was a savings if we took advantage of it today.
As the Friday market closed, there'd be a little over $100,000 in net present value benefit to the district by getting rid of both, which is, you know, that's one of those we continue to look at the numbers because that's so unusual, that you can actually do that and actually have a net benefit. It's just that the markets were in.
So it'll be timing.
Thank you.
Mr. Townsend?
So when we talk about risk, are we just talking about interest rate risk that we're missing out on a better rate or not get, or paying for them than we ought to be? Is there any kind of collateral risk in the sense of, is it like, sort of catastrophic risk if one of these things goes in a certain sort of way? Or is this strictly about making the most of the money we have invested in it?
I think it's more the latter. It's, again, these are unusual in that there's termination options in there, so, you know, as we sit here today, forgive me, I'll give you the current estimates. So the termination values on these, on each one of these can be six or seven million dollars. The way the math works on it, to terminate the swap would be in one case 7.2, the other case 6.5, but you're refinancing those on a fixed rate at a much lower cost than the fixed rate on those, which is how you get to the net. So in this scenario in which their Citigroup could exercise an option to give, to force us to write them a check, for example, of $5 million, we may not be able to refinance that $5 million. It may actually cost us a couple million net to do it. Is that...
Yeah, that's what I'm...
So the other thing we keep in is also the rating agency looks at how much variable rate...
case, 6.5, but you're refinancing those on a fixed rate of the much lower costs and the fixed rate on those, which is how you get to the net. So in this scenario in which their Citigroup could exercise an option to give, to force us to write them a check, for example, of $5 million.
Okay.
We may not be able to refinance that $5 million, it may actually cost us a couple million net to do it, is that?
Yeah, that's what I'm.
So the other thing we keep in is also the rating agency looks at how much variable rate you have out there, so that's another reason that we'd like to limit that amount and have it at this.
As I recall, a few years ago, we came close to a termination, correct? And I think the cost was going to be in the range of $5 million, is that, am I correct?
Yes, sir. The school board successfully terminated in 2016 one of its swaps for essentially break even, low loss, and at that time is when we alerted the board, because again, these options, these cancellation options are very unusual. In the discussions with the swap counterpart party notified us of their intent to potentially terminate, and at that time, it would have been, your memory is probably better than mine, it may have been $5 million. Had we not renegotiated it, six months later, we would have been writing a check to them regardless of what the markets were.
Yeah, I think we've been fortunate, we've had some partners that were willing to work with us, that's not always the case.
Yes, I think Citigroup deserves some credit for being willing to renegotiate. It helps that they missed the deadline, which we reminded them of, but they were a willing partner nonetheless.
Ms. Cunningham?
Yes, and then what are your fees to process this type of transaction?
It's a great question, it's whatever our contractual arrangement is.
And I don't think we've ever seen that, so that's why I'm asking. I know I haven't.
I emailed it last week, or did you send that out?
No.
The contract.
Are you talking about when we agreed to choose his company as our financial advisor? You're talking about that contract you just sent out, it was after the board meeting, the last board meeting?
Yeah, it was requested after the last workshop, I sent it out.
Where'd you send it? How were you sent it?
Okay, I still, he's looking it up, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have it.
Don't have it?
Sorry, it's not one of the standard pages we print, I'll be glad to give you the exact number.
That'd be great, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Next slide. We have.
I'm up again.
Yes? I was going to say next slide.
Thank you. So we have the, Jason's coming up, we have the budget meeting tonight, final budget meeting, which we were again supposed to have the, on the third. And I want to, I just wanted Jason to talk to the board about the TRIM, because we had the meeting set and you have to have it in a certain number of days from tentative, and we missed that because of the hurricane. So he's going to give you an update that all is good, and then we'll take some questions, but we were going to present tonight the budget at the regular, at the meeting and do a little overview there, so, if that's okay with the boards.
All right, good afternoon. I apologize ahead of time, I'm going to kind of read some verbatim language here, so it's not as personal as I usually like to make it. But, "Tonight, the board will be asked to adopt the fiscal year 1920 final budget and millage rates. September 3rd was the original date of the public hearing to adopt the final budget millage rates to meet the statutorily set truth and millage TRIM process. Hurricane Dorian threatened the state leading into Labor Day weekend, and the district prepared to open several schools to serve shelters in preparation of the storm. The district closed its operations on September 3rd and September 4th. Previous to this, on August 28th, Governor DeSantis issued an executive order which declared the state of emergency for 26 counties. The very next day, on August 29th, the governor issued another executive order which declared a state of emergency for all 67 counties. At the request of Governor DeSantis, President Donald Trump then declared a federal state of emergency for the entire state. This allowed the district to cancel the September 3rd meeting and still meet the TRIM guidelines because of this executive order. In Florida statute, no other taxing authority can hold their final budget hearing on the same day as a school board or the board of county commissioners. This allows that each homeowner can attend the meetings of each one of their taxing authorities if they so choose. So the normal process every year is the board, the school board gets to announce its date of the final budget hearing, and then all the other taxing authorities announce their public hearings on different dates. When we look to reschedule this meeting, September 17th seemed to make the most sense because we already had a workshop. The City of Lake Hamilton tonight also has a public hearing. We could have, we could have rescheduled our meeting and they would have been forced to reschedule their meeting, however, this executive order allows them to still hold their meeting tonight. So if any City of Lake Hamilton folks wanted to attend tonight, they may be attending their own city budget meeting instead of ours. So, we are now holding the budget, and we did advertise this meeting, both in the legal section and also in the regular circulation of the ledger this past Thursday, Saturday. So we've met all these statutory requirements of TRIM. So tonight, you'll vote to accept the millage rates for 2019-20, that millage rate, the required local effort is a decrease of .165 mils, which is required by state law. And the budget, now we handed out budget books to you guys maybe about two and a half weeks ago. I have extra copies if you like one for today, if you didn't bring yours with you. The 1920 adopted budget totals $1,814,254,918 across all funds. This is an increase of approximately $346.8 million over the fiscal year 1819 budget. Some of the highlights, general fund budget, it's an increase of $81.6 million over the fiscal year 1819 adopted budget. Of the $81.6 million increase, 32.6 is due to increased revenues from the Florida Education Finance Program, also known as FEFP. The remaining increase of $49 million is primarily due to the carryforward of last year's fund balances, recircid fund balances, and an increase in transfers to the general fund from capital funds. Of this 32.6 million dollar revenue increase from the FEFP, and we previously discussed this over the last few months, 4.7 is due to a new restricted categorical called turnaround supplemental services, which will provide additional funding for schools that are identified as being in turnaround status. Another new categorical is called the best and brightest, this is approximately 9.8 million. This is a complete redesign of the best and brightest award program that started four years ago and was previously funded directly from the DOE or the Florida Department of Education's budget. This is not new funds to our district, it's simply a transfer of the funds into our budget. So of the 32 million in extra revenue this year from the FEFP, about $15 million of that is purely discretionary and will be used to pay for growth in students and other increased operating expenses such as retirement. The DOE is projecting a growth of 802 in unweighted full-time equivalent students, also known as FTE, and a growth of 1,841 in weighted FTE. The 1920 budget is a flat level of service budget, meaning that the district is able to provide the same programs and services as we did in the fiscal year 1819 budget. Fund balance is budgeted to be 3.05 percent. Again, that's, that is 100% fun budgeting for all salaries and all expenses. We expect to end the fiscal year 20 budget with an actual fund balance of between 4% and 4.5%. Unless we see a substantial change in the funding revenue from the state, it's likely the district will need to decrease our level of service next year to meet fund balance requirements. Couple other highlights in the budget, capital funds, the increase in capital funds this year is $457 million. That sounds like a big increase, it is, but it's primarily due to the bonding that we did in June of about $192 million. Also, last year, I could not budget the entire year of sales tax revenue because it was on November's referendum, so we, last year's budget was about $25 million less than it would have normally been. So that, that makes up the majority of the $276 additional million dollars that we're seeing this year in our capital funds. I also wanted to mention self-insurance funds. We continue to see a nice decrease in our workers' comp claims. I don't think we've brought you that information in the last couple of years, I think we'll update you soon on the work that's been done there for workers' comp. This year's health insurance fund includes $9 million in extra revenue that helps correct the shortfall that's occurred the last several years due to substantial high-dollar claims. This year, currently, we're seeing a positive cash flow in the health insurance fund for the first few months of the year. Those are the highlights of the 234-page booklet in front of you, and I'll be glad to answer questions, yes, ma'am.
Can I get a copy of the highlights? Because of the notes and tabs in that book, I don't have what you just read in a concise.
Yes, I have copies here.
Okay.
Right after this.
Any other questions?
Lot of work, thank you so much.
Thank you to my staff, my staff.
Yeah, lot of work.
Just make sure you send those.
Yes, yes, I will send them electronically and I'll give you a print version after this.
Thank you. Then we have grants with Andrew.
We provided for you today the first iteration of the grant summary report, which was included in the update to Grant Policy 6110 in June, and we provided it today as a discussion item so that we could get feedback as to if the board liked the way that the grant summary report was formatted, and if there are any changes that you would like to see for the next quarterly report that will be coming out in November.
Is it something we have?
Yes, yes, to keep you abreast of what's, you know, as they're coming in, and they'll be quarterly. My only question I'll have is the amendment numbers?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you explain that one?
Yes, the amendments for a grant, sometimes a grant will have no amendments, so we'll submit the initial application to a funding source, for example, the FL DOE. We'll submit the initial application to them, and then if sometime during the year before the grant expires, if we want to make a change to how we had planned to spend some of the grant funds, some of the initiatives, or just move some money around from one account line to another account line, we have to submit an amendment to the fund source to be able to make those changes. And some grants have multiple amendments, some grants only have, don't have any amendments, it just depends on the changes that are needed to be made throughout the year to meet the needs that we've identified.
I just want to highlight that section because I know multiple times we go back and forth with some of them.
Yes, ma'am. And the amendments are kind of new, we realized that we weren't necessarily providing amendments to the board in the past, so that was something we wanted to highlight during these quarterly reports, was that we do make changes during the year as needs come up.
So the color one, that list where it's federal or state, and then the other one you can match up to those through the amendment process, like, so it's.
Yeah, I mean, there's the grant summary report, the main overall one that's got the description. Yes, a tiny, tiny print, yes.
Yeah. And again, that's why God made Zoom, but I just, the amendments piece, the way you identify that, like, so, my original thought is we haven't labeled whether these are federal or state, like, there's a column that's federal and state and the other. If it's not too much trouble, maybe you throw the federal state column and into the other, but if you don't do that, I think we could still probably link them up, right? They're easy to identify.
You should be. The amendment report actually goes back to the beginning of 2018-19 school year, because we had not provided these at all to you last year. The current, the one with the tiny print, the grant summary, is really only back through about January of this past year, so we didn't go back to, all the way to the beginning of 2018 for that one. For future reports, it would be good to know if you guys would like to have, like, a comprehensive list, so like, an ongoing list that we just add to this, or would you just like to have the list of the grants that have been added since the last quarterly report?
I think a comprehensive list.
Yeah, I would prefer keyboard, I think. This is helpful, though.
In the future, one of the other items I was wondering is, how would you like these presented to the board? Would you like them added as an information item for work session, or what's the pleasure for the board?
That'd be great. Yes, and if we have questions, we can ask.
Can we also have them emailed, just because sometimes I struggle to get attachments down, like, it's just easy to, I mean, you do both, just at the time that you attach it as an information item out, also just.
I can do that, that's no problem.
I suggest when you do this information, if we're going to be doing comprehensive and we're adding, we might want to do like an executive or something on top, so they'll know which ones are new, and how to kind of bulk it. And then I will, even when they're new, because you have a description, maybe bold that area about, or you put it in yellow text or something, so they'll know the new ones, the latest ones that.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions?
In addition, I would say that on a college sheet, each page needs to have a heading, a top heading, and the points are very small.
Oh, it's so small.
I know you're probably trying to keep it all on one page, but it is not easy to.
I couldn't read it at all in paper, I had to have it on, I can't see that.
Right. Would you prefer to have it shared as a PDF in the future, or would an Excel file format be easier for you to navigate?
I like the PDF.
Either way, as long as it's electronic, we can zoom in.
Right.
I like Excel, because I like to play with them, so, I'll be easy whenever I was doing.
Right, you can play with data.
But can I?
So, I can show you how to convert a word to an Excel.
And it's no problem, then I can provide it in both formats, it starts in Excel anyway, and then I convert it to PDF, so it's a problem to provide both formats.
Oh, PDF. I can't convert it to Excel.
That's what I thought, see, I was going to let that go. It's going to show me up.
I wouldn't do that.
I have one other, I just wanted to remind, Mr. Bridges, we have the conflict of interest that all the board members will need to sign.
All of one, and that one is cleared, so we'll have that done.
Lastly, on the work session, I wanted to mention, I tried to get this item on with both of the financing options, but as you know, four or five months ago, the board approved for Mr. Datus to do the bus radio project that he has completed, and we told you that we were going to try to pay for that out of sales tax, and if not, then we were going to do a short-term lease, and we were not able to pay for it out of sales tax. So next meeting, I will have that short-term note for the $6 million that was for that project, but I wanted to let the board know. And I tried to get it on so you'll see it maybe on an agenda item with no attachment because I didn't get it in in time. The rate is going to be held, so there's no problem with that, I just wanted to try to get them all on at once with the hurricane and everything. So you'll see another item for a random short-term note, and then we will pay that off over the next five years, the project, for the security and the budget.
Five year?
We will, we will look at that every year, at the end of the year, Mr. Pitts and I talked about it, if there's a time in a year or two that we could pay that off, we will absolutely do that, so we avoid the interest, but right now, I think, we're recommending to go with that to kind of, for, so that we have lower payments, and we'll let us do more out of And we'll let us do more out of our capital funding for the next year or so.
Is there a penalty to pay it off early?
No, there is not.
So if at the end of the first year, for some reason, we could?
Yeah, we, we toyed with all the different options. But we figured we'll go and start this and see when we could pay it off if we can. And then we'll, we'll get back and let the board know.
Well, that's an item that just doesn't qualify under the criteria of the.
Yeah, Mr. Weiner, I asked him again. Wes, did you remember when, what his response was about capital, the bus radios out of the sales tax and maybe?
He was with you because I think it's not really fixed.
It's not, yeah.
It's per statute.
Part of, part of it's a software, Rob, I believe, too. It's a whole.
There is a portion of it that is software.
Yeah, so it wasn't really a capital item.
So no part of that could be paid? No, the whole project has to be paid.
Yeah, we asked, I asked around.
Yeah, we, we get very conservative advice about that, about that particular question.
We do.
And at the next meeting, Mr. Weiner's here, we'll, we can ask him again on that.
Okay.
Because that was, that, that was logical. But the answer was technical.
Thank you. Okay, there are only two informational items that are there. You have item six, which is the library. And if there are any questions, I know Dr. Aix is here to answer any questions on that.
Comment?
Yes.
Yay! That's wonderful, because they have an awesome countywide cooperative for libraries. So to know that we're going to be a part of all that is just so exciting. So thank you for all the work that's gone into that.
Thank you. And item seven will also be up under Dr. Aix's, which is our assessment calendar. Any questions, Mr. Townsend?
I'm going to vote against that. And part of it, I'm, I'm going to talk about why tonight.
Which one?
The whole cal- calendar.
The cal-, okay.
There's the, a large part of it's just because I think, anyway, I, I, I'm, 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 it's, there, you know, I would love to see us reduce what we do as, as much as we possibly can. But as much as, as anything that relates to the state and, and I'll, I'll explain my, my point later, later.
Any other questions? Ms. Fields?
Didn't we reduce a lot of assessments?
We did reduce. I can allow Dr. Aix to talk about that more if he wants to. But we did reduce some of those, our progress monitoring materials, which we have, have to have in there. Dr. Aix, I don't know if you want to talk about the numbers that we did reduce a couple of years ago?
Good afternoon. I am concerned that Mr. Townsend is referring to. We've done every way that we know how to try to reduce the amount of assessments. I think when I first started here, I think we reduced some hundred-and-eighty assessments that were in there. Keeping in mind that we're also accountable to the state to turn in this testing calendar. So it's a, a state requirement that we do turn this into them. And I think the legislators and the Department of Education has looked very critical to ensure that we're not over-testing. Keeping in mind that besides the test that the D O E requires us to administer, we also have some requirements with reading that we progress monitor that. We have requirements within our turnaround schools that we progress monitor some of the areas of that. So we've looked very critical at the pieces that we have in place and feel that they're critical to make sure that our schools are moving forward.
Yeah, but. And I agree with all that. My, I've got one question. What, what on the calendar here is strictly voluntary to us? Is, is there anything that you would call strictly voluntary to us that we do on our, on our own accord?
The pieces that I would say that we are doing, we progress monitor the E O C courses quarterly. And I think that that's mission critical, especially at our schools that we feel are fragile. If there, we've looked at that and give some flexibility to the schools that are A and B schools, depending on what their grade is and whether they're able to turn around a process. But the pieces that we have in place that we feel like that we could actually do away with, we've already sunset some of those.
And just, so just while we're at this thing, the, and again, I'll explain, I'll explain more, more, more of this tonight. What would happen if the board did not approve this calendar? Just said no. Could, could, could you guys just send, send it on your own authority to, to, to CalIasi and just do it? I mean, what, what, what would happen?
Well, I think that you would be going down a very slippery slope whenever you get into a back and forth with the Department of Education, considering that the number of schools that we're working with them hand-in-hand to try to improve right now. You have different funding sources that are, you know, overseen by the Department of Education. You've got different grants and different plans that the Department of Education approves, which they expect a progress monitor in there. So I think that the concerns being voiced in, in a light, in a public light is a, you know, is, is, is the recourse that I know you would have, hey, you don't agree with it, but you understand it's a state statute. The way to get state statute and legislation changed and, and state board policy changed is through legislation. I just think as a, as a local board, you'd be going down a very slippery slope to try to go with the back and forth with the Department of Education at this time.
Right, I don't, I don't dispute their power to do it. My, my, I, the, and we, the court, the, the seventy-sixty-nine suit has essentially abolished school, school boards. There, we are essentially an advisory advocacy board. I, my expectation for me is I'm going to vote against, against this and advocate politically and that you guys will implement that under the orders from, from CalIasi. I mean, the, the, if you read the actual lawsuit and, and what the, the decision is, there's been a fundamental statement made about the relationship and power here. And I don't dispute that they have that power. And I'm, so that's, I'll explain more, 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 more about this tonight. But I would, I don't think we're necessary to oppose this. I, I think you guys just do it. And I guess that's my, my ultimate take.
Ms. Courtney?
First, I want to thank Dr. Aix because he puts up with me quite a lot. And because this is like, test and punish is my thing, and that's what this is. But I will say that when I was an actual classroom science teacher, when that calendar came out, it was four times as long. And it's now seven pages of kind of bigger print. So I appreciate you, Dr. Aix. And he has even offered to walk schools with me where I have teachers that are pulling their hair out, you know, with these progress monitoring. My, my question, though, I have a couple for you. Does the progress monitoring match up to the expected outcome or the outcome of the state test and punish test?
Yes, ma'am, we look critically at that each year. And what you're referring to is the correlation between a progress monitoring test and the state outcome. So for the ones that we look at each year, we run that correlation. But it's more than just the correlation with the, the, the F S A outcome or the E O C outcome. What it really, you want to do is you try to get classroom teachers on, involved with any kind of edits that you need to make to those progress monitoring. And I think that's when it becomes the strongest and the better use for a teacher is whenever they can say, this question closely aligns with the learning target and task. And that's what we really try to do each year, is have those focus groups to update what we call our quarterly assessments. The reading and math assessment that we use third through tenth grade, and we have K-two for a different one, but it's STAR. And again, there's a correlation that we run with it and look at it from the company. And this year, the STAR assessment was only off a couple of points in, in some of the situations. And in some situation, it really kind of under-predicted what you, what you'd want instead of over-predict. But it just depends on the school. But yes, ma'am, we look critically at that each year.
And then my second question, Dr. Aix, is what testing platforms, you kind of answered it there, do we actually use?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Fortney is referring back to a question that a community member had asked us about the current testing platform that we're utilizing. That we use Unify or what we call Performance Matters, that we use as an annual contract for that. And we can do formative and summative assessments in that. And it actually has the ability for teachers to actually give any kind of quiz or test in that particular platform. We're working very diligently this year to make sure that teachers are aware of the capabilities of that because you can actually scan those results. And if a teacher wanted to, you can also utilize a, a tool called Grade Cam where you could have a multiple-choice answer sheet and they could put it in front of the camera on their laptop and it'll actually grade it for them. So we have those tools in place. And we're, we're trying to ensure that we're able to train out on that. And we actually are creating some demonstration progress monitoring schools that we're working with principals and teachers on that.
Again, Dr. Aix, I, I thank you for always meeting with me. I appreciate you.
Any other questions on that, Ms. Fortney?
Ms. Miller?
I think it was Fields. I just, it's kind of on the same topic of how you're involving staff because what I hear most from staff is these tests not always aligning at the end. And the tools you just mentioned, like the Grade Cam and stuff, I can tell you, I can talk to teachers that don't know anything about it. So can you talk a little bit about how that's rolled out? Is it coaches that are used? Is there committees formed with teachers? How are we getting that message to staff?
Well, Grade Cam is something that we've had availability. And also the Performance Matters, the availability's been out there. So what we try to do is work with some of the coaching groups, go to specific schools and make sure that, that they realize it's out there. Ms. Miller, one of the things we're reenacting this year is what we call our teacher leader groups, where a teacher from each particular content area or focus area from a school comes in, like every quarterly, and meets with the district staff. And we talk about tools like that. So when you talk about Performance Matters or you're talking about Grade Cam, we try to make sure that we are getting the message out to the teachers and make sure that we're involving those principals with that. We also had that same discussion about Performance Matters yesterday was day-to-day, and we use that heavily, schools did, to be able to disaggregate the data, look at subgroup data and progress monitor that. I'm still not seeing the traction that I would like to see with some of these tools far as the Grade Cam or the use of Performance Matter as a, as I would say, an easy button for teachers.
Right.
So that's why we're creating those demonstration schools to where we can be able to create the traction within some critical schools and then be able to actually show with other teachers and principals how that may be used.
Have we considered doing, I know you love starring in videos. Have we considered doing more of that to get it out to teachers who are not getting this insight? Like some, I don't know if, if there's an internal, I mean, I don't know that it needs to be out on our district website. Is there, is there an internal platform that can be used for training videos or things that, like testing, that we could push out to teachers? Moodle, I guess, would be. Because I just don't think we're reaching the masses with this because I'm going to get, what schools? I've never heard of that. So I would like to see something that you can do without taking up so much of your time that could be pushed out to staff.
We've done some of the Moodle-type courses with it.
Right.
But I do think the piece that, been able to connect that bigger on a, on a larger scale, I think that that's a good recommendation and we can look into doing some of that. I, I think one of the things that, I guess, the hesitancy may be that, you know, we're really not promoting testing, testing, testing. But what I do think is there are some tools out there that would make teachers' lives easier in the grading piece. And that's really what the committee member was talking about with Ms. Fortney is how are we, you know, trying to push these tools out? And so we will probably look at that critically and see if we can do something to get the information out better.
We want to, we always want to push that we're teaching the whole child. But if your job is based on the end of the year, how a test is going to, how a child's going to perform, then I think it's, the staff sees that as motivation to use some of this.
Yes, ma'am.
But thanks for looking at that.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Fields?
I just had a question. Didn't we have a, an assessment committee a couple of years ago that was comprised of a lot of the teachers? And they sat down and looked at all the tests that Ms. Fortney referenced? Were you going to do a lot of streamlining?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So we are, we have made some progress. It might not be where we need to be, but it's a whole lot better than it was. And then my, my other statement is that once this is approved, can we get a clean copy of this? Because tonight it has draft on it, please.
Hopefully, well.
Can I follow up on Ms. Fields's comment there? Because, yeah, that streamlining. And we, at least as a, as a teacher, found that our, like, Carrie and stuff, they would literally email us, did you find any problems with even like spelling errors? You know, on, on those progress monitoring tests? And then the, the second thing, I know that you're not going to want to hear this, Dr. Aix, but I'm going to tell you. I got scathing, I didn't send them to you, emails about L S I training.
Me, too.
And how useless it was. And, and I think our teachers would have been better served maybe with what we're just talking about as the trainings, just FYI for maybe another. It was, it was horrendous, some of the, I did not send it to you, Dr. Aix.
I appreciate that feedback.
Yeah.
That feedback in the.
Sorry.
Spend more time on that.
Miss Little.
I just want to know, the assessment committees, they, do we still have those in place? Are you still using a committee to review? Because I've also heard, when a teacher sees a spelling error, spelling error on these, like, they really, I mean, the reaction to some of this, is there still an assessment committee or a team that looks at feedback from?
There are committees for each one of the critical areas we've talked about where we bring in teachers. But the committee that Ms. Fields is specifically referring to is back when teacher evaluation, there had to be an assessment for each one of those subject areas. There was a committee specific to those particular grade levels. So that specifically what she's talking about is those committees were very active. But I will say that one of the things that's kind of a spin-off of that, we still have the T Act that's very involved with the teacher evaluation piece, was the S A O piece.
The T Act?
Yeah. And so that's a piece that serves some of that, where they're looking at the critical data points as they were, as they relate to the teacher evaluation piece. So the assessment committee was kind of a shoot-off of that particular committee. But every time we do a quarterly, we make sure that we have teachers involved with it. And we do send them out. We get really critical feedback from teachers on it. And I appreciate the, what Ms. Fortney was saying about that.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
I'm sure this is a pretty elementary question. But when we talk about progress monitoring, is that the assessment that we do that's outside what's required from, by the state of Florida? Or is it more complicated than that?
It's both, Mr. Wilson. In other words, if you take like third-grade reading or second-grade reading or students that are what would be considered a struggling reader, a level one or two, we're required by the state to progress monitor that particular student's progress. And so we administer the STAR. We do it as a district, STAR reading, STAR math, to ensure that our students are moving forward, that we're looking at the strategies we're putting to place, are they working? So yes, we're required to progress monitor those students by statute, by state board rule. But we were already doing that. So it's some of both. Some of those are both. So we look at it that way. Some of them are state-required, some of them are, we're trying to progress monitor, ensure that we're getting the bang for our buck on some of our strategies.
And I guess the question I have is probably a question I've heard from other board members. What part of, of the assessment that we do is, is not required by the state? I mean, I understand it may be important, but do we have a sense of how much of the testing we do is not required by the state? I mean, if it's not some of you.
That percent is very low, believe it or not. Because let's take, for example, algebra or geometry or civics. Civics is a great example. We may not be required district-wide to progress monitor that. But every time we have an instructional review with the Department of Education, they're going to ask, how do we, how do we know that civics is moving forward? And we vetted and we've administered this civics progress monitor throughout the district. What we found, and this is kind of how that, most of those are required that are on there, what we found is that the majority of our schools benefit from that. And sometimes it's a critical back and forth, are you sure that this question aligned? So while it may not be required at every school, it is required by some of the schools that we have that are struggling.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Every time you speak, I think of something else.
Ultra stuff, though.
Yeah, sorry about that. So are we telling our instructors how to correlate that to a standard-based grade? Okay, I'm just going to say it because, you know, I'm not good at math. Kids tend to not try very hard sometimes on those because some teachers don't give a grade. Some teachers count it 30 percent. How do we look at that as a district? I'm sorry?
You're talking about the motivational piece?
Yes, you know, and again, you know. Yes, sir. That's it. That's the question.
Okay. So I think that when we're looking at progress monitoring and the purpose of formative assessments versus a summative assessment, I think that we all agree that by the time a student gets to fifth or sixth, seventh, eighth grade, if they have a grade that's associated with that, they tend to take it more seriously. The problem that, or the concern that I would have with that is when we start to actually, from the district, take and direct what those grades should be. Because I think that a lot of times, the more that the teacher is working with that assessment, I think then they will include it in there, the more they believe in it. And I have checked some of that in the grade books, believe it or not, here recently, and was able to actually see where there was evidence that the teachers were really heavily working with that formative assessment to make sure that it was shaping. I do think we've got some growth to do in that area in grading. But I think that we need to first make sure that the teachers are ensuring that what we're giving them for an assessment aligns with their instruction.
Well, you know, the point I'm going to make is from the math teacher, the inquiry about the end of course exam and how that affected student grades referencing that. But, you know, and again, it's what Mr. Hill said. You know, at one school, you may have a really dynamic science department working together and they all are on the same page and then the kid transfers to somewhere else and that A all of a sudden is a C. Or whatever, I'm just using as an example. That's the disparity I'm talking about. Yes, sir.
Want to take a 15-minute break?
That concludes, we're going to take a 15-minute break and then we'll return in three.
Okay, are we ready to get started again?
Mm-hmm. It's all on you.
Okay. So we'll get, we'll get started again, please. The next item on the agenda is a review of this evening's school board meeting agenda. And we have, we have some special recognitions, Madam Superintendent?
Yes, we do.
We have three sets of minutes. Are there any questions, comments about the minutes? Additions, deletions, corrections, items C eight through C 10. All right, we'll move on to items C 12 through C 15. And we do have a small change to item C 12, just correcting the dates of travel. Anything else? Any questions, comments about item C 12 through C 15? As usual, we have a number of donations from our, our community members, our community partners. And we're always very grateful for those. Just a couple in particular I'd like to recognize. There was a $16,585 donation from J.B. Ellis DDS to Cleveland Court, very generous contribution. And another $8,000 donation from Restoration Fellowship Church to Kathleen High School. Again, we appreciate so much all of our community partners. Those are some very special donations. That moves us, any questions, comments about the donations? Takes us to item C 40, we'll go C 40 through item C 45. Questions, comments about item C 40 through C 45? All right, moving on to item C 46 through C 50. Any questions, comments about item C 46 through C 50? Move on to item C 51 through R 56. Questions or comments about item C 51 through R 56? All right, we're moving on, our items R 57 through R 60. Questions, comments? R 61 through R 64. And we do have some public hearings. We have public hearings on policy updates and also on the final budget. So I'll ask Mr. Bridges to just kind of go over the policy updates somewhat before I invite public comment. And I'll ask Mr. Peron to talk about the final budget before we invite public comments. Okay? Any questions about the agenda? Comments?
I don't, well, I have a question as such, but I noticed when I was pulling it up, it's showing the date of 9/30. And it's not 9/30. And I don't know if that needs to be corrected.
I mean, it's the old agenda, but it just didn't get updated, I guess.
Yeah, well, we, the day didn't get updated, as you said.
You can't.
You can't update that.
All can update.
Okay. And then the other thing is I just wanted to see if we might need to get a hard copy of the capital plan. I'm sure that we can.
Certainly, no.
It's very, it looks very nice and very detailed.
Thank you. This is going to give that to you.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Are you going to have someone come up for final budget and do the highlights they read here?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Peron and Ms. Pitts.
I'm going to do the millages and kind of overview of the agenda. And if you'd like, Mr. Pitts, to do what he did this morning.
I think that would be good.
Yeah. Okay. So that brings us to board comments. And before we get started with the board comments, the board did ask me to reach out to the consultant about the possibility of a referendum. So I contacted Tom Nolan. He indicated that he would be most happy to come and talk to us. However, we'd like to do that. He did say that as a consultant, they only work for political action committees. So, and obviously, if we move forward on this, a political action committee would be necessary to drive the referendum. And so his firm may or may not be engaged to do that. Nevertheless, he said he'd be happy to come and talk to us for no fee. His preference would be to do something similar to what we did before, where he meets with board members individually and, you know, goes over what to expect and, you know, fields questions and things of that nature. And then he would submit his, his report to the superintendent and then it would be up to the superintendent to bring it forward and make some sort of recommendation. If that's okay with the board, is that, he said he'd be happy to come and talk to us as a board, but he felt like it'd be more productive if he could meet with us individually.
And he's doing that at no cost?
He said he'd do that at no cost.
What's his name?
Yeah, his name is Tom Nolan. We use them. It's the same, it's the same group that the World Class paid for the survey and that they came and talked to us, we might call them, same consultant. And it's the same consultant the PAC used for the half cent sales tax as well. So if you'd like to do that, he did ask that if we wanted to, if we agreed to meet on an individual basis, he would like to try to schedule it all in one day, of course, but it's up to whatever you, what's your pleasure? Are we okay with that?
And this was from our conversation last time, this would be to move forward for 2021, 22, after the three years? Is that correct? Or is this just in general conversation?
I think this is just general question to answer and you could, those would be questions you might want to ask him. Yep. Are we okay with that? Are you all right with that? Okay, so we'll, I'll ask Ms. Warbington to reach out to board members and see if we can put, I guess, a date. I mean, he, I'm sure he'd be willing to come a couple of days if we can't get everybody on the same day. But if we could try to coordinate that, would that be okay with you?
Absolutely.
Yeah, where is he located?
No, but he'll drive here. He said he'd come here and meet with us here at the school district.
That's very kind of him.
Yes.
You must have a great relationship with him, Mr. Wilson. Because in the end, he's not going to be able to get a contract from them, you know what I mean? Like, he's just giving us information.
Right, he will not be able, he will not, he will not enter into a contract with the school district. He will however enter into a contract with a PAC if they choose to use his firm.
He's done okay. Called the school board members ever since then.
Yes, and their organization, you can ask about it, I'm sure he'll be happy to talk about this. They really have a great reputation for working with PACs throughout the state as relates to school board initiatives and school board reference. Okay, so wanted to share that with you and we'll move forward with that. Any other board comments? Yes, sir. Mr. Townsend?
Can we talk for a few minutes about the, like, as an, and just some general questions I have? And I think it's my, my understanding, the mother of the child planning to come speak tonight and I think it might be good for the superintendent or whomever to have something in mind to say. But my, my first question, I guess, is do we, have we classified what this is? Like, there's, like, in the code of contact, there's fight and there's bullying and there's, are, do we know what this event is in our code of conduct at this point? Has the investigation settled on that yet?
The investigation is still ongoing, so we can't, I cannot comment right now because of the investigation. The investigation is open not only with our side, but also with LPD in there. So they're looking at that. Our district committee has an investigation that's ongoing with it as well. So that's coming forward and hopefully that will be concluding in this week, I'm hoping. It should be concluding.
And eventually you'll make a recommendation to us, and this is for the benefit of the public. You'll make a recommendation for us about what, about what needs to happen there. On a couple of very sort of general policy-type things, one of, in speaking with Emily, I think one of, one of the places that we may have erred was suggesting even accidentally that they go to the court to get injunction. I, I've heard this used at different times before. Do we have any sort of policy around how we recommend that or don't and what? And if so, I think that's something we need to kind of get a handle on when we, you know, I think sometimes parents think all, their only recourse is to go to the courts. And I think if, if we had managed to not have this go to the courts, we might be in a better place now. So can anybody help me with that?
What I can tell you is that we were, the school didn't suggest that Mr. Hill can verify that when we're there. That was suggested by law enforcement. Am I correct about Mr. Hill?
Okay.
That wasn't the school suggesting it.
We only give guidance. We could not encourage one way or the other for that. That would be law enforcement.
Well, okay, let me, so let me rather than focus on this specifically, in the future, if a child comes and we, and, and parents are concerned and we're not able to allay their concerns, are we ever telling them, "You can go get an injunction"? Or are we recommending against that? I would like us not to do, to do, to do that. I mean, I think that's a really bad idea. And if we are going to do it, we should go with them, but I'm sorry, I just.
So, so in the situation where you have, there are certain levels of discipline that we're required by state law to work closely with law enforcement. We actually have to notify law enforcement. Once law enforcement gets involved, they will make parents aware of their rights and regarding, you know, as it pertains to the law. So we can certainly look at that, but currently we do not have a policy where we lead with that. We stay with the school side of discipline.
And, yeah, I think.
Being our disciplinary policy.
And we do have Mr. Butler who was here as well. I want that, but he can let us know, but we don't make the recommendations for them to go to the courts. Usually law enforcement, that's something they're going to do. They make that recommendation. We do not make that announcement.
Okay.
We do not encourage nor discourage the use of injunctions. So that is our stance. The schools know that. Each year we tell them. We do not get involved in that. That is a court decision.
Do we ever inform parents that that's an option? I mean, is that something we do as a matter of course?
No.
We do not. That comes from law enforcement. And one thing I noticed in going through the code of conduct on bullying, like, there's, there's a good list of what it entails, I think. One of, there's three aspects to it. One of their, one of the key being that the behaviors are repeated. So like the, one of the problems in this is, is it is, is sort of the imbalance of power. Like, like when, that kind of went on beyond being a fight and very one-sided. I don't really see in the code of conduct in any specific area where somebody who has great power over someone else, whether that be in the moment or in an ongoing way, where that's called out as a, as a specific thing. Like, there's one thing, when you have a fight and two kids are fighting and it's sort of equal. And then the fight ends, one side wins and the side that wins keeps beating and beating and beating on the other child. I don't really see that noted in the behaviors here in a way that we could address. Now, now, now maybe I'm wrong, but I think it's something we ought to think about. Like, like there's, when does a fight become something much worse than a fight? And these are all things I think we need to think about. And that's, you know, it's been extremely difficult, couple of days. It's going to be a difficult meeting tonight. And, you know, I would hope that we're thinking about this. And John, you and I had talked about helping principals, particularly in that first interaction, where there's been something really bad with parent and helping them understand. Maybe there's some training, maybe there's some direction where, you know, make sure they are able to ask the parent, "Are you pleased with where this is?" And then they stay with it, you know, stay with them, you know, for, call them two hours, two hours later. "Are you, are you still pleased with where, where this is?" I think the way to address these things is to stay as close to the parents as we possibly can, knowing that there are all sorts of, of rules about what we can say and what we can't. But, you know, piecing together imperfect behavior here. And I credit the superintendent for getting involved quick, quickly. But I think if we can help principals get that first interaction as right as they possibly can and then throw up a flag if it doesn't go well. You know, that's, that's, that's what I would really urge that we do and think about when, when we're training and, and, and talking to our principals. So those are the things I have to say. I do, I would encourage the superintendent to have some sort of statement or thought ready for tonight, especially if another comes, and that's really what I have to say about it.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Yes, Charles?
I'm kind of going along, along the same topic. I just want to make sure that, from the, you know, I know we normally have protocols with the superintendent as far as sending the superintendent, copy John, copy our secretaries. When incidents like this arise, is it best just to text or call you, whatever time it is, just to make sure that you know as, as soon as possible and that we are getting ahead of these things?
I would encourage each board member, as you learn of things like this, to notify me first and not staff. Because then I can deploy the resources I need to make sure that we address the situation quickly. Because I was really kind of behind. I found out later on that evening from someone in the community.
And my second question is, for as far as student privacy laws go, those come from the state level, the federal level that we are not supposed to share their educational record, which part of their educational record is their discipline. So I just want to make sure that the communities understand that and where that comes from, is that in state statute, federal?
I think it'd be good for Wes to kind of.
I'd be delighted.
Thank you.
Yeah, I understand, especially when, when there are emotionally charged incidents like this and people want to have as much information as they can, as quickly as they can. This, the framework in which we operate is established by the, by the federal. This, the framework in which we operate is established by the, by the federal Congress, by the US Congress, and something called Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act. And you may hear it referred to colloquially as FERPA. But Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act says, parents have a right to access information about their child. It also says they have a right to privacy to make sure that no one else can access information about their child. Florida has adopted a statute that mirrors this, which they're required to do. And that is how, that is how we are required to govern ourselves. There's also policy guidance out there that says that that applies not only to records that exist. So, we can't hand somebody a copy of a disciplinary action against someone else's child, but it is, it is against federal law and state law even to discuss the content of that with someone who is not the parent or is specifically authorized by law. What, what the, you know, the, the nut of that is that the same thing that protects your child's privacy protects the privacy of every other child in the district. And while that can be, can be difficult, especially in times like this, that is the law that the United States Congress has laid down for us. And that's the framework in which we have to operate. The school board can certainly talk about things, um, at a policy level or generally at the school level of, you know, what, what your expectations are, if there are changes that need to be made. But anything that, that, that rises to the level of personally identifiable student information is private to that child.
And, and, sorry, can I? And as far as getting victims' rights for any of our students, that would have to come from the federal level. Our state could, they adopt something.
Well, and there, and there are some different rules that apply to, to law enforcement investigations. But for us, student records are, are sacrosanct. So, there are very limited things that we can, that we can release concerning students beyond directory information, which is, you know, the usual name, address, phone number, unless people have, have opted out.
So, even if they're in a situation where the law, the law enforcement record can be released, our records as far as what the discipline was for the school.
Student records are governed, are governed specifically by state and federal law. It says if it is a personally identifiable student record, it cannot be released outside of those very narrow exceptions. It, it can be released to the parent of that child, and it can be released in accordance with court orders or lawfully issued subpoenas, that sort of thing. But it, it cannot be shared, it, it's not a public record. Student records, education records are not public records. They're only releasable in accordance with the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds, Ms. Miller.
Just another question. I, I understand, and sorry about just mentioning that, that, um, the police records are available. And I think we need to look at this as our response, you know, instead of, I think sometimes when we have crisis, which anybody who sees these things happen, it, you know, it's a broken community, it's broken us. Anybody who has to witness, um, crisis like these, our response to it, sometimes, if the response in the community, if they believe that we're gatekeepers and we just start closing the iron gates behind FERPA and other things, you know, is there crisis management training for those principals to know how to interact with families? So, the family understands, we do care about these children, we will be investigating. I don't know the interactions. Obviously, on social media, people are understanding that it was more of a gatekeeping kind of incident, which happens a lot of the time when you have crisis, because we didn't deliver the information well. So, I'm wondering if we do crisis management to deal with the public or with families when they, when they have this kind of thing, um, which we are, hope are very few. But even other incidents, there was something else at another school that day that was a lot less. It was one of my schools and it was a lot, you know, very minor incident, but the family still felt that no one was listening. So, I want to assure the community that people are listening and we care about children. And this is, you know, that kind of message when they come tonight or anytime. Because I know even in the population that I do, deal a lot with, with ESC, if we just, it's, it's stakeholder management. Do we care about you? We want you to know that. How well do we train staff? Maybe they don't have the tools or they do have the tools.
Every, I'll talk about the principal level. We went through, um, significant levels of training, starting with the assistant principalship and aspiring leaders, which communicating, uh, seeking first to understand, leaning with empathy and, and getting the facts and understanding, and, and just like you said, showing empathy to families, uh, is how we lead out. Seeking first to understand, really understanding what has occurred. So, we have had that training. It was more extensive at the principalship, but, um, certainly we'll take a look at it and talk with Ms. Joe, Dr. Aix, his team, Ms. Joe, and, um, see, see what we currently have in regards to that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Joe, Ms. Reynolds.
Just real quick, is part of that training, including letting them know that we can't do this because state and federal law won't allow us to share with you what the discipline was? I think that at least puts it on, you know, I think that that, I don't know that that was ever really explained.
Yeah, the why behind it just.
And it, you know, I think it's okay to say, we, we can't share it with you because.
Why?
It's illegal to share it with you, the state and federal law.
When I have, when I have trained on this in the past, typically the way I present that is, it is perfectly all right for a, for a principal to share with, with a parent, a concerned parent, that, um, that students who have committed infractions under this code of student conduct are subject to discipline, here's what it is. That, that is not to say that Jimmy has been suspended or expelled. It is to say, I, I can't really talk to you about Jimmy, but what I can tell, what I can talk to you about is here are, here's the code of student conduct. It tells you what happens if, if somebody commits X, if somebody commits Y, if somebody commits Z.
Mr. Townsend?
So, we're allowed the child, tell a child what they've been a victim of? Like, if, if, if the.
We, we are, we are allowed to tell them what, what the sanctions are if someone commits an act under the code of student conduct. And I, I don't, I don't want to shade this. I want, I want to be very careful. The, the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act is serious business. And, and, and private, it, it's very much like the doctor-patient privilege or the privilege of the clergy or the attorney-client privilege. When this district is full of information about students that is sensitive, that is delicate, that is potentially embarrassing, and it is protected by law. That means that, that nobody, if, if you're in the district and you, you're a district employee and you've got a legitimate educational interest in that, in that information, you can have it for that purpose. But you can't go home and talk about it with your family. It is, it is that kind of private. We've got healthcare information, we have mental health information, we have disciplinary at, information. We have information about disabilities. That stuff is sacred. It is sacred. And, and, you know, I, I absolutely understand the frustration with people who want to know, okay, what is happening in a case like this? What's happening to the perpetrators? The answer is they're subject to discipline. Here's what the, the possible disciplines are. And I would also remind you that even in law enforcement records, those are not released unredacted for minors. Information in those is, if, if it's about minors, you know, you can't, you can't go in and find out what, what Jimmy was sentenced to because he, because he, he, you know, stole something from Magic Market. That is, he's a minor, it's protected. There, there are laws that protect that. So, it's, it, it is very frustrating. Absolutely understand it. But that is the law, that's why it's there. And what I try, try to always remind people is the same law that protects the privacy of that child protects the privacy of your child. That means that nobody can come in here and ask for your child's disciplinary records, your child's healthcare records, mental health records, behavioral records. It, it applies to all. But, but it, it really does have that level of, of seriousness. This is, this is akin to those kinds of elite privileges. This district is full of information about people that is very, very sensitive.
Ms. Fields?
I would just say this is a teachable moment, and we need to utilize this experience to make everything better for future purposes. And I, personally, I want to commend the superintendent. To me, she jumped on it pretty quickly when she found out and doing the press conference immediately, trying to assure everyone that, um, that she was on top of it and that everything would be thoroughly investigated. And I think that we have to allow the investigation to unfold. And whatever that, uh, investigation, uh, ends up being, that the, uh, correct action is taken and whatever that looks like. And I think that we really need to work on the training piece and have, uh, if you don't have it, a cheat sheet on if this happens.
Yes.
What is the, uh, consequences? And that makes sure that every principal, whoever is going to be responsible for the discipline is, um, is, is privy to that. So, they can be, I think it's just education, making sure everybody knows what they are doing and feel confident in what they're doing and that they can say those things.
Thank you, Ms. Fields, Mr. Townsend.
Right, and I, I agree with that. And, and this is why I'm trying to pin you down on this. Like, there are a number of things where, you know, this could, this could be a battery or a fight or a fight with injury or a fight, like, and I understand at this, this point, the investigation hasn't identified what was, what specific thing it is, is, is yet. Can a principal say, okay, here are the three or four things covered, we're going to be investigating, getting this. Here are, here are the three, three or four things that we're going to be, be looking at, into, and here's what the, the, the punishments are. We can't go beyond, beyond that, but, but this is where we start.
Principals and school administrators should be very careful in, in, in giving out information that may specifically identify students and, and information relative to their discipline. I don't think there's any problem at all handing somebody a, a copy of the code of student conduct and saying, you know, this, this involved, uh, this apparently involved a fight between two students, we're investigating it. And, and, and if, if students are found to have committed an infraction under the code, here's a copy. But we should not be saying, okay, we're, well, I, I think, I think you go too far when you get so specific as to say, well, this could either be fighting or it could be mutual affray or whatever. But this could be fighting or it could be battery. I, I think you want to be very careful in, in, in saying, okay, Jimmy will either be suspended for three days or for 10 days. Uh, I, you know, that, that, it's, it's tantamount to that, and we need to be very, very careful. I, I, I think it is absolutely fine to say, anyone who violates the code of student conduct is subject to, to sanction, to discipline. And here's a copy of the code of student conduct. And, and, you know, applies to everybody, applies to your child too. But I, I think you get, you, when, when, the closer you get to the edge of, of, of expressing what it is that is going to be visited upon a student in a disciplinary case, the closer you get to violating federal law.
I, again, I'm, the. What I think would be helpful here is there, is to explain to the, the, the parents or the, or the kids that there's a range of different, what happened, what happened, what happened to your child has a name. We don't know what that name is yet. When we decide what that name is, there are going to be some sort of con- con- consequences for it. We can't tell you what those consequences are yet. That's what I'm saying, we should, we should say from, from the start, you have to explain it, because the public doesn't know that.
You can absolutely generalize and say, uh, th- this may result in, in suspension or expulsion. You, you can absolutely say that. But I think you need to be careful not to say, this could result in, in 10 days' suspension or this could result in, you know, I mean, it's obvious, there, there are some things that if, if, if a child brings a gun to school, then there's a law that says zero tolerance, you must be expelled from school without services for this period. So, you know, that's obvious. But, but when you get into these others, I think you're absolutely fine to say that, you know, that, that depending on severity of the offenses could result in suspension or expulsion.
Two, two, two aspects. So, I mean, we, we, like, our, our principals should be engaged in, in this discussion. I, I, I hope when and if we do training on this, that it's very specific to having this high-pressure conversation, that we role-play it or that, 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 that we focus on this, because everything hinges on that first 30 minutes, right? Like, everything goes downhill from there or we have a chance to, to, to be an effective guardian for their, for their kids. That mo- that moment is really, really important. And we need, and, and it's hard, it's really hard. And even if they get it right, they're not always going to get it right. Like, I mean, it's, it's, it's not going to work all, all, all the time. We need to equip them to do the best they can. And then if it doesn't go bad, they need to be able to raise the flag immediately, help, you know? And then, I think we also ought to think about something that might work, um, something like a victim that, advocate. We don't necessarily have to call it that, but, but the equivalent of that with, within the school, 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 school to school district. So, if there's a, um, you know, the principal is an administrator. They're, they're there trying to administer the school and run, run, run things. If we have somebody whose job it is to attend to the parents or attend to, to the, to the, to the child, there's, there's probably enough, um, difficulty that, that we could keep that person, you know? I mean, I, I, I just think that's a, a thing to think, to think, to, to think about. So, anyway, I'll, I'll stop here. I, I appreciate the description.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend, Ms. Miller.
I said one other thing, because we're such a compliance-based, um, just how we operate. I don't want it to turn into robotically handing someone who has just received an emotional, I mean, if you have someone in front of you that's had a crisis in their life, I don't want it to be a mechanical, here's the code of conduct, in there you'll find what will happen, we can't say anything. There's got to be, and I know at the staff at that level, they're all emotional at the time, they're trying to figure out how to help the family. But to convey compassion about what happened, de-escalates a situation of we didn't care, we didn't act. Because I think people did, but I don't want to create a policy where we're handing them a, a book and it's going to be in here, whatever happens, sorry today, and, you know, that's it. There's got to be some kind of follow-through.
Yeah, well, the, the personal touch is absolutely critical there and it has to be done in context. My, I just wanted to be, wanted to be clear, there's, there is a bright line between what can be released and what cannot.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Fields.
I think my last statement on this and question is, Ms. Bird, Superintendent Bird, did you not make a call to the mom?
I did. I spoke to, after I, I actually got the information, I spoke to the mom that same evening, yes, I did. We had a conversation.
So, that conversation's had?
Yes, and I told her I would be at the school the next morning, along with law enforcement, discipline, and yes, we were there the next morning.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Any, any further comments about this particular matter? Okay, other comments? Ms. Fortney?
Uh, and Ms. Porteous, I wanted to, uh, say thank you for the new teacher reception. That was, uh, really nice. And I, I just wanted to bring up in work session, I, I feel like that's something that we could expand on to include all new hires, like custodians and, uh, bus drivers and, and make everybody feel as welcome as you did those folks.
So, we're actually in conversations, myself and the teacher engagement department. We are trying to figure out not only how to expand it to all new employees that are date certain or, you know, that were hired by a date certain, but also just employees in general. What can we do to, to provide that human touch to say, hey, thank you for being a part of kind of those schools? And so, even if they can't attend or if they can't attend, what can we do to do that? So, we're thinking about that, but, um, and I'll certainly let you know or update you as to how that goes.
Uh, speaking of updates, uh, the grants that we use to, uh, entice teachers at the beginning of the year to go to the low-performing schools, how, how's that coming along? Rumor has it that the DOE shot us down like, uh, like, uh.
So, and I know there are some questions, so we'll, and I'll start with Ms. Porteous, can, um, chime in? And I do believe we have PEA there too, that's, we've been, all been working together. Yes, you know, anytime you have federal grants, it's going to come with some strings to it, some things that, that we cannot do. There are some things within the grants that they did say, no, they were not going to, um, award a grant if we have those, those items in there. Um, I personally, myself, made contact with DOE and then did another conference call to try to get some things in there, some things they're going to allow this year, but not after this year. The plans would not be approved for any of the dollars. So, you know, we want to make sure that we get the dollars and they do not take it. But they were very strict and said, if, if this is included, or this group of people are included within your grants, we will not approve your plans. So, we're working with them, we kind of, um, I believe Maria, she's not in here, she's been, um, talking to them. I know Ms. Porteous has been working.
We worked with AA&amp;E to identify assessments that we, that will be acceptable to the DOE. We're all working together, I've been in constant contact with Ms. Yolton.
I just wanted an update for the public, because of course I get these scuttlebutt in.
But I, I will tell you, they were very clear about the, the funds not being paid to district staff if you're not included on a school's roster. That's what they're very clear about that. So, that was one of the items that was discussed, like I believe we had the, um, the speech.
Students weren't attached to you specifically, so if you didn't have a roster of students. Some first year, they questioned first year, they questioned some parents. Um, some first year, they questioned first year, they questioned some parents, um, E S P employees, uh, a lot of our ASME employees. We tried to be as inclusive as possible, and the DOE, um, was not as lenient as we had expected them to be.
Yes, the last conversation, um, we're sending back a revised plan, um, with our M O U, I believe you all were coming to revise M O U. But the last conversation, she was very clear, if these were in hand, we would not approve the plan for the monies. So we're revising it, so that we can get.
Thank you, Superintendent Byrd and Ms. Porteous, this is amazing to me. Uh, uh, I saw something on the news, Pasco County had voted on a policy for, uh, some like no videos. Uh, apparently, a parent went into their school, did y'all see that? And, uh, was videotaping and, uh, put it on Facebook and, uh, I guess some of the kids were involved and put in a YouTube video together, and there were kids that weren't, that the parents didn't want in the video, that kind of thing. Uh, and they they, uh, I guess Pasco County voted, uh, not to allow parental, and it was parents doing it, uh, I believe, uh, to come in with their phones and, uh, for safety reasons, you know, of nothing else. Y'all didn't see any of that? Maybe I'm the only one that takes the ledger, okay.
And I don't know how, I mean, we have students making videos during the day, I don't know how we would, videos.
Kind of thing, but, uh, you know, the the thing about the confiscation of phones. Uh, you know, I I again, coming from a a a school, that, you know, what you just said, Ms. Miller, you know, at some schools, the the person who confiscates the phones gets disciplined, and at some schools, they don't discipline the child for having the phone and and videotaping it, it it just, that's what I hear. And it's that not equitable enforcement of whatever rules we have, just wanted to make that public. Uh, I think that was, that's about it, except, boy, Sasha, that new building at Barto High School's gorgeous. I could teach there in a nanosecond, I can.
Is that an announcement, Ms. Porteous? I'm sorry? Is that an announcement?
No.
She said a nanosecond at that.
Yeah, yeah, okay, nanosecond.
Science teacher.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney. Any other board comments? Ms. Fields?
I wanted to know, we are on the contract agreement renewal for the, uh, school board attorney and the internal audit.
Yes.
Uh, the, um, their, um, expiration date is June of twenty twenty.
Yes.
And that's less than a year from now, and I just wanted to know where we are, trying to come come up with something that's gonna be admissible by the board.
Yes, that's a great question, and we, uh, I did, uh, conduct the evaluations last week, and we did discuss those contracts. And I certainly would would encourage Ms. Matthews and Mr. Bridges to chime in if they'd like to do so. You you might recall, they had a contract in place that was lea- a legally enforceable contract, the state made some changes to state law. And and as a result, at some point in time, it became necessary for us, I think, to adopt the new law. You know, I think it was kind of a mutual agreement that, uh, because those contracts were already in in full force in effect, that, at least from my perspective, and and the discussions we had, it would it would be better to wait until they expired, and they do expire in in twenty twenty, so I think now is the time to start those discussions, and I think, uh, Mr. Bridges and Ms. Matthews are in agreement with me on that. So we're 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 in the process of of starting those talks.
So do you have a timeline?
Well, certainly well before twenty twenty, and 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 I'll get started on it, but, I mean, I I don't know who the new board chair could be next year, so it may, it may end up being in the hands of the next board chair, but I'll certainly get started on it.
I should be, I I should be clear, 'cause I don't, I don't, I I support that 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 process for Carol, and I'm not gonna support a new con- 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 contract for us. Um, I just, that's what I'd be clear about.
Okay.
I think it's time to.
Anye- Any other board comments? Ms. Ford?
Are you saving? Go ahead.
I I think we have all s- received emails, um, from Lake Alfred Polytech about, um, eliminating positions. I know I've tried to get a little bit more information, but I think we probably still have some more questions. Um, my first one would be, is, is this happening in the, to this scale at any other school? Um, I know it's been explained that they were told early on that they would, if they didn't meet this number, that they would be losing units. They thought they had met the number, and then students didn't show up the first week. Um, but just, kind of, how is it determined that with this number of students, this is how many positions they're losing? Yeah, I don't.
You probably have one, Mr. Perron, Ms. Bridges is back there as well, and Mr. Hill is there.
So if I, just talk a little bit about the process, in case you don't know, in in the spring, um, we build, uh, staffing models based on the history of F T E, or or students enrollment at the school. And then the, um, principals go through and and build their kind of a spring budget and staffing plan. And then, in the fall, when school starts, um, on the third day, they're supposed to disenroll, that's one of the big big pieces of this, disenroll any student who didn't show up. And then on the eighth day, we take the enrollment, and we kind of do the whole process over. So in this certain, uh, instance, the, uh, in the spring budget, um, we built, and I don't have the exact numbers, but it was five hundred and sixty some odd kids, because the fall and the spring, uh, enrollments were about that number. And the s- the number of teachers they had at the school at that time were ten more than what they earned. So any other school with five hundred and sixty would have had, let's say, thirty units, they had forty. So we asked them to cut back, because that enrollment should stay the same going into the summer and to the fall. So, um, the school wanted to keep the staffing and wanted to increase the numbers, and that's when I, we could defer some of these questions to Carol and Bridges. And so we gave them time to, uh, accept and enroll more students. Knowing full well, if that number didn't come in, we would have to reduce, 'cause you cannot carry those positions. So we went through that, and the numbers did not, um, come out to where, uh, they tried to get them, I think it was seven twenty-five. We over-enrolled at seven sixty-five, knowing that kids will say they're going and then go. So then, what we do is we take the number, we have a strict formula that we use, we use it at every school. Uh, eighteen kids per K three class, twenty-two for four and five, and then it's a straightforward, and it spits out five hundred and sixty kids, thirty units. And so, or there, and maybe it was six hundred and something, so it was thirty-five units, and they had forty, so we asked for the five. It's simply, that's how the process goes. Um, this one was a little unique, uh, that we were doing it late in the year, in the, you know, May and June. Um, and then there were some other, uh, some other factors that came in where students were there, and at, towards the end, and almost at the beginning of school, and then left, and I believe went somewhere else, but I could let, um, Ms. Bridges talk to that. So that's the process, and that's where we got, how we got to where we are right now. But we do, to answer your first question, this is, this is more than, we've had some threes, and we've had some twos. Um, but this was a huge change in enrollment.
I just, I mean, I would assume for every twenty to twenty-five kids, that that's typically one teacher unit?
Correct.
Is that correct? Um, so.
Don't forget, they were over-enrolled by ten to start. That's why this one doesn't equate out to, hey, they're only thirty down, it should be one and a half teachers.
Right. I just, at what point do you look at the enrollment and say, okay, it's July fifteenth, this is what your enrollment's at? Are you get, I mean, I understand, you know, twenty-five kids don't show up the first week, it happens.
That's the hard part, because the, they're not interested.
A hundred kids don't show up the first week, and it just seems a little odd, so is that an issue that we have at other schools? Is it, especially for a magnet, I would think, you know your enrollment.
No, that's why I asked, uh, Ms. Bridges to ask that. We don't, normally in a traditional K twelve, we don't have enrollment jumps. Maybe in a high school of two thousand, three hundred, a hundred kids, yeah, you could probably see that, but not in an elementary or a small, middle.
Ms. Fortney?
Those are, Ms. Bridges.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, please.
So, uh, this is a unique situation, because, um, we opened two charter schools in that part of the district. Um, one of those took two hundred middle school students, and so that impacted those schools in that area very significantly. Not just Lake Alfred Poly, although certainly they bore the brunt of it, but Jewett Academy also always has a strong waiting list. This year, they worked through their entire waiting list, just because, uh, when you pull two hundred sixth graders out of a relatively small community, uh, that has a profound effect. And what we find is, the students who are, because the parents are making choices, are signing up for lots of different choices. And so they were at a very late date, still making those choices.
So do we know of this, I believe you had said before, when we just talked, there were, at one point, there were seven hundred and eleven enrolled, and now there're sixty-four students below that. I know you said four were, had reenroll, reapplied for Jewett and got in. The other sixty, do we know where they went, or?
Well, and it's hard to qualify that it's just sixty, because two things are happening at the same time. You're enrolling new students, you know, getting them to apply, because it's summer enrollment, you pay per app. And at the same time, you have students who have made a choice and are now reconsidering and making another choice. So it's not like a true sixty-four students that you can identify. Um, they're, they're constantly moving, and unfortunately, many of these parents don't give up any of their options. And so it's not like they come to Polytech and say, oh, we're not taking the seat, we're going somewhere else. No, they stay in that sort of, um, that undefined zone. Um, and until a school requests the records, which, like, our terminal operators don't come back until just before school starts, a lot of, um, schools, charter schools have, are in the same situation. So we're requesting records and realizing these students are never going to enter the system after school's already begun. So it was just, uh, it was, it hasn't happened in the past, it unfortunately happened this year. And with the opening of those Navigator and Bach North in that area, there simply wasn't a way to to predict that. We were keeping the numbers as accurately as we could, the problem was, our numbers were not correct.
And it's with all of, um, the additional middle school seats now in the area, it seems like that would be an ongoing issue. What is our plan to combat it for years to come? Do we have?
I have a plan.
A deadline? Do you have a plan? I knew you would.
I know you're surprised. Um, so, the solution is, and and this is tough for a school that was, um, a failing school, but we've seen it happen at Dundee L and at Dundee Ridge. The solution is to have a really strong waiting list well before you get to paper application. Um, and so we are doing a number of things that we have never done before, you're going to see cinema ads, and and all of the cinemas are, you'll see bus wraps on some of the primary bus routes. And so we're trying to do a lot of recruiting and help the students, uh, and those families make those decisions. However, let's be honest, next year, Bach North will add another two hundred seats, Navigator will add additional middle school seats. And so if you have a really strong waiting list, I'll use Jewett School of the Arts as an example. They had, they lost a lot of middle school kids as well, but because they had eight hundred students on the waiting list, even though it's inconvenient to move, constantly be moving kids, you can make it happen. But if your waiting list is sitting at zero, you just don't have the depth, or even twenty, you offer those twenty seats, well, that doesn't mean twenty students will accept. It means that maybe only ten will accept, because ten others might choose one of their other options that they are offered. So in one way, it's wonderful that we have all of these options, whether they're scholarship options, private school options. But the reality is that kids can go a lot of different places, and they're making those decisions late. So our goal, and we've got a principals meeting for our magnet and choice principals September thirtieth, and that whole meeting is about how to recruit students, 'cause we can do a lot as a district, but at the end of the day, the way you recruit and retain students, and retain is as important as recruit, is really that one-to-one relationship. It's like the empathy that you were talking about earlier, you have to build a bond to that school, you have to get those students a- attached to that school and motivated to attend. And so we'll continue to work on that, but it's going to be an increasing challenge.
And the parent.
Mm-hmm, absolutely, the whole family.
I have more questions, but I think other people do, too, so I can hold mine.
Okay, we'll go, Ms. Fortney?
Well, since we're talking about this, uh, again, I wanna thank Dr. Aix and Mr. Hill for putting up with me, because I was bombarded with, uh, uh, overcrowded classrooms, and, uh, I I'm just curious, I heard that Stevens Elementary lost three units as well. They are one of our low-performing, struggling schools. And just common sense, I don't care, there is a formula, there's always been a formula, why would we load up kindergarten, first grade, with over twenty kids in a classroom of a struggling school already, that has a high E S O population, with new teachers? Anybody?
We do take into consideration, um, we sit down with the.
It could have been five?
What's that?
It could have been five?
I'm not saying that, uh, but I don't believe we, I don't believe the three was the final number. We we meet with the, uh, regionals, and we go through every single classroom of every single school, and the teacher loads, and 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 where we could look to reduce if they're at, if they're at low. And the regionals will weigh in and say, that grade is is a testing grade. Just, I don't see the enrollment, I think that shows what the enrollment is down. Um, and so we'll, we will look at, um, and they will weigh in whether that's that that's doable, whether the, you know, the principal can afford to lose a fourth grade, it's a testing area, and that's where their hu- their, um, classrooms are low. And, you know, we we have that conversation, and we, and and we don't always just stick by a formula.
Again, I get the complainers, I, so. Letting them know they have valid points sometimes. Thirty-five in a science classroom is not ideal, that's seventy hands. Challenge anybody who won't play that game.
Seventy hands, I've not thought of it that way.
That's right.
Good job, Ms. Fortney.
Seventy feet moving around. Fired.
Ms. Miller?
I have a, a couple of things have gone off, just from me thinking. First, the very first thing is, this started coming in, like, emails and calls, ten o'clock at night, they're still pouring in. I had no knowledge of this, I'm not the board member of that area, but does the board, somebody that, when this kind of thing happens, at least the board member that covers that school should be aware of it, because I'm clueless, and they they think I know. And then their information starts coming in, and it's one after the other, and I've gotten to a work session today that I'm still collecting information from that school, and it's mainly staff and a few parents, who will show up tonight. Um, I just think that, and it's not my school, and I appreciate people calling, 'cause I'll still ask questions, but and when we, when we are doing that to a school, unfortunately, following formulas, I think that we need to alert the board member of that school, um, to at least be prepared that they're gonna get an influx of parent and teacher calls. But the one thing that stood out, and this isn't for another work session, um, because these schools of choice are not clear, we're not consistent on what the, who the school enrolls, especially with support services, that kind of factors in some of that hanging on to a spot, because if this school, which I understand serves more E S C, E S O L, and gifted, that's increased who they're serving, they, they're serving all of those subgroups more than they have in the past. If they're gonna do that, I might, if I'm a parent of a gifted child or a five oh four child, I might hang on to that spot, 'cause I might be in an academy that will ask me to leave, do you know what I mean? And so we need to be clear with these schools of choice, if we, I think if we shored up that on who they take, it would help some of that hanging on to spots for longer than they should've. But I also didn't understand how e- how these, um, teachers that do support, when you're using a formula, I didn't realize that they have two teachers that push inclusion, they have a good program there as far as support, but the students in the class, they're counted as a half a seat, if it's an inclusion, like, is that formula consider the support level in those rooms? If you have a class of twenty, and eleven of them have I E Ps, and you're bringing in a support staff, and those seats are only counted as half, is that part of your formula? Because that was brought up to my attention, too, who they're serving.
Um, on the inclusion, I'd have to check on that, we, we focus now, we have, um, more information and data than we've had in the past when we're looking at these, and that that may be part of the issue here, that we're we're looking in in a lot, um, able to pull units, because the E S C classes are pulled out, and when we used to look at those, not, I'm, I'm not having a lot of inclusion, where they're.
Oh, the self-contained?
Yes, but we didn't, I know, but we didn't have the information before. But we didn't have the information before, so I think maybe schools had more units than they really needed based on our formula because we were including them all together.
Okay.
Now we see five here and six here and five here. And then now you see seventeen, eighteen, eighteen instead of these eighteen's being twenty-two. And you go, whoa, that's high, leave them alone. But they're really not, they're sixteen and seventeen because we have all the information that we hadn't have in the, in the past. So I'm, I'm curious or wondering if that's part of the reason. We, we did take probably more units than we have in the past, but they're legitimate.
They're losing thirteen percent, I mean, that's the percentage of what they're losing. And if there's inclusion happening and they're only, so you're looking at and saying there's seventeen, but there's really twenty-two in that class because of how they're counted or whatever the differential is, that may affect services for those kids that are still there.
No, when I see seventeen now, I'm seeing seventeen.
Okay, well, that's going to be a question that we'll need to be prepared. And the other thing, and it's, it's part of stakeholder management, you have two music teachers, theater teachers that moved into Lake Alfred, love Lake Alfred, not a lot of housing choices there. So they both could work at that school. And when they start cutting, it's going to be by seniority. And you're, you know, we're doing that again, we're hiring, we're promoting to come work. And then this many weeks in the year, you're going to lose your job where you chose to purchase a home. And I don't think that's going to help our recruitment. So the how we do this, I would like to see softened to the people that we're trying to recruit.
Well, first we do ask for volunteers. And first of all, to know that, that they ask for volunteers first. And then if we can't, or if no one volunteers, then it does go by seniority.
Who's going to volunteer?
At this point.
Well, so far they're not volunteering.
They do volunteer.
Yeah, right now it's reported that they don't have volunteers, so you're going to, we're going to start cutting teachers that are brand new.
Right.
And so that's, we have to be, we have to be cautious of that. Or we at least have to make the transition easier for them, I don't know how you do that.
Well, we normally sit with them, we talk to them. It's a, it's a real hand-holding process from our end in terms of making sure that they land well. So it's not like, hey, you're being assigned to North Lakeland Elementary, especially if you're in Lake Alfred. That's a far, nothing wrong with North Lakeland Elementary.
I live in North Lakeland. Okay, I understand.
There's nothing wrong with it, but we don't necessarily look at where the needs are. We sit down with them, identify where they would like to go, see if there are positions open and then go from there.
Because I don't know how many chorus and music teachers openings you're going to have. That's what I mean, I don't, I don't want to lose these, you know, that's another part, that's a part that's not a formula that we need to be cautious of five, this many weeks into the year. But you will have families and you will have staff there tonight. And we need to be able to explain this, and I would like just to understand this a little bit more, that probably we can move on from the work session. But I only got this like at ten o'clock last night. So maybe we can have a further conversation, even if you meet with the staff that show up tonight. I would like to be a part of it.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Were there comments?
One last question. How many student schedules are going to change because of this move? How many student schedules are going to be changed because of this move?
Depends who you lose, if you lose a self, you know, ESC support.
I mean, an estimate of how many?
Well, when it comes to human.
They may be already adjusted.
Twenty, I mean, twenty students there. So it just depends on, are you cutting out an elementary where you got eighteen students that you cut to?
This is for Lake Alfred Poly, it's a middle school.
Quite a few.
Yes.
Like over a hundred?
Guess who gets to do that, my guidance counselors.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, that are already maxed out.
Did we, I think we're waiting for, did you get a response, Ms. Reynolds?
I, yeah, I just, it.
If you cut ten teachers, add five.
Please don't cut extra.
Keep thinking about what it was.
Yeah, it would be, twenty would be a, a really close estimate.
Four and twenty.
Twenty.
Times five.
Twenty times five, so a hundred.
Great, one of those. But twenty's.
So twenty percent of the school is being completely uprooted halfway through the first quarter.
On the, so like both Buck North and Navigator are what, fifteen miles at least from, from?
Buck North is more than that, way more than that.
How?
Twenty-five.
I mean, are the kids who are going to those two schools, I mean, how far do the zones go out? Are, are, are they like, are they pulling because they're closer to some kids who are zoned for this school? I'm, I'm curious if there's a, like if, if you're in a part of the Lake Alfred Poly zone.
Lake Alfred is in the same magnet zone as Jewett Academy and Jewett Middle, which includes most of Winter Haven. So those.
Yeah, so Lake Alfred is at the top of the Winter Haven zone. Buck North would be at the bottom, I mean, out of that Winter Haven zone. And so you have students who, it may be, there may be a significant difference between the two schools or a significant distance, but for them it may be closer to go to Buck North.
Right, so, right.
So it's, it's less about the magnet school zone and more about whatever works with that parent or whatever their preference is.
I guess are you finding that the kids who are going to Buck and, and Navigator live closer to Buck and, and, and Navigator than to Lake Alfred, I mean, to, to, to Lake Alfred Poly in general?
So if, if you look at last year's Buck North, you have a concentration around the school, but then you have sort of, if you sort of created a scatter graph, of course, the further away you get. But there's some concentric circles of some, of some people who are making some decisions to drive or choose to take their transportation routes that are, that are significantly further away. And that's typical for any choice, anyone who's making that choice. Most of them are driving past a closer school to attend. So it's more driven by the program or their perception of the school.
What would their zone's zone school if it comes to that?
It would, I mean, you would have any number of, you'd have Denison, you'd have Westwood.
I'll just not forget my Stan Ball.
That's right. That's a bunch of Stan Ball kids.
Any, any further comments on this, on this matter?
Oh, no, this matter.
Further comments on this particular issue?
I'm not on this issue. I was moving on.
All right, moving, moving on, Ms. Fortney?
I already talked to Mr. Pitts. I, I won't be voting for the district budget because the staffing plan is still in there, obviously. And I just wanted to let, let that, I wanted to read a quote from Joe Biden. Don't tell me what you value, show me your budget and I'll tell you what you value. Mr. Peron made mention of, that our finances for our insurance is better because most people reach out to me, say they can't afford to go and pay the co-pay that we're having. So that's what I've heard, the staffing plan, I just said, you know, we've got overcrowded classrooms, schools losing units. I, I just can't in good conscience vote for this when there's no staff, no raise, increased insurance, no decrease in work, workload. You know, when you don't have money, I, I hear you're supposed to bargain with contract language. If we could just lessen the workload, I would feel better about this budget. So that, that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Fortney. Ms. Reynolds?
I wanted to talk a little bit about the roundtables. I have spoken with a couple of other city county commissioners just about how they do their roundtables because that's come up before. And my understanding is that they ask for topics to have roundtables, but the staff are actually the ones that bring the presenters or the information forward. I think there's a lot of things that staff could educate us better on. For example, we have Joe McNaughton in our math department and he's the number one person in the state for math curriculum. So I would love to see him bring a presentation forward about math curriculum, that type of thing. But I think that we've kind of gone a little bit astray from what the roundtables were initially meant to be. And I would love to see if we're going to continue to have roundtables to get back on that track of it being information that we would like to further discuss, but staff bringing forward what they're doing and how they're working through that.
Could I be very, very, very clear there, exactly what I intended from, exactly.
Well, that was a initial discussion.
I, I, you know, you can choose not to attend, attend them as, as you have. That's the solution to that unless, unless the rest of the board wants, wants to not do them. I found it incredibly hel- 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 helpful. I think the, the math, I mean, what, what, what I think I'm going to talk about tonight is that every school in Florida since two, I mean, every, every county in Flor- Florida, Florida since two thousand and three and probably beyond, the proficiency of kids from fourth grade to eighth, eighth grade in math has collapsed. In two thousand and seventeen, according to the NAEP, Florida was seventh in math in fourth, fourth grade, which is probably because we retained a bunch of kids in third, and we were thirty-seventh in eighth. There's a catastrophic collapse in math ability throughout the state. We can't escape that. The point of that math roundtable was to try to think about some creative ways that we, that, that we could do the best we could to ma- to manage what the state model cau- cau- causes. So, you know, again, you, you're, you're, you're welcome not to participate as, as you haven't. And, you know, we'll, we'll just go, go from there.
Ms. Miller?
Yeah, I just, what's odd about this is it was something that was intended to help, you know, broaden our discussions and include staff. And it was voted unanimously to add. I think there were different people had understandings and I don't know if we need to go to the minutes or I wouldn't bother. But it's turned into some weird division thing for whatever reason. And I think that's not helpful for the board or our staff or our community. I met with the superintendent and she had the suggestion of making an agenda, which would help, you know, if there needs to be staff involved. I wouldn't go so far as to saying that board members couldn't suggest topics to be discussed. I think it needs to be collaborative. I think staff could probably come in and work collaboratively with us. I mean, this whole, this whole thing on get on one side of the fence or the other or not show or show or you're on this team or that team is not helping this community. It is not helping this board and we're not helping students move forward. So we need to decide as a board, I'm going to still come. I would love for the staff, I could sit for three days with Angela Usher and learn stuff I've never heard before. But I think it needs to be, it needs to be available to increase top, whatever the topic's decided. It should have an agenda so it doesn't go awryling. And I think that might have been the issue at one point, even though you could have comments at that. You know, so we want to make sure the superintendent is comfortable with what we're doing. But I don't understand how it got from one extreme to the other. Having additional time, me having to read twenty thousand pieces of paper, which is what I counted the last work session, is not acceptable. Like, I have to have time. What we just did at Lake Alfred, that would have been a great work session. This is what happens with our data, this is how we do the data. You know, that kind of thing is productive and how it got to be not productive, I don't understand. So I think if you want a line where the board agrees what it looks like, to make everyone comfortable and attend, because it does look bad when it's on film and there's two people, three people sitting here. You know, I think we need to be able to do that and work in a collaborative manner. To say that we're never going to have an outside, I'd like to bring in some state people, people to talk about how we implement some of the ESC stuff with this huge two hundred thousand dollar contract that we have out. Like, I think that would be great to see what best practices are around the state. I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a negative thing. I just think we need to get over ourselves, we're almost a year into this. It was a unanimous vote to have extended time. We just need to decide what it looks like. I mean, that's just my opinion.
Ms. Fields?
I don't think we voted on a roundtable, I think it was consensus. We had to go back and look at the minutes.
It's when we were elected, we voted. That was my first vote, I was, I remember voting.
I, I don't, I'm not trying to be back and forth with you. I think it needs to be checked, I don't think we voted on it, I think it was consensus. And when we had discussion on the roundtable, it was so we can get to know each other better. I remember that specifically. That was the purpose of the roundtable originally. And I have told the board chair that I have no intentions of coming to a roundtable when all we're doing is sitting around and talking about things that to me is not relevant towards our mission and our vision. And I agree with you a hundred percent. If we're going to have a roundtable, then let's have some subjects and bring staff. Joe Naughton, I said that when it was brought up. He's one of the, the, the most talented people that I know probably in the state, beyond the state. So why not include him?
He was asked to include, I, I asked, I begged the staff to part, participate in that. I, I, in fact, I reached out four months. The, the date was set well in advance.
Okay, well, I, I don't, I don't know what you reached out to, but to me, and, and I said it to the chair and no disrespect, it's a waste of my time and I'm not attending and you said, don't come, if you don't want to come, then I'm not coming.
I said that?
No, no, no. And basically, I agree with him a hundred percent.
Right, I agree. No one, no one's required to come.
Ms. Townsend?
I mean, I, they, they are involved. I mean, part of it is for us to get to know each other. Several of the, several of the prior ones to the, to the big math, science, science one, were just us talking about really good, good issues that were important to us. It was a, a way for us to talk in a place where we can, we can talk. I mean, I, I, I mean, I just think people are missing a great opportunity by, by not taking part in them. You know, I, I, I found them to be very hel- helpful, they're exact, exactly what I was hoping to do. I thought everybody who attended the math and science thing, I mean, the rest, the rest of you guys can speak for yourself. I, I thought that was incredible. We had tons and tons and tons of our teachers who are, who are actually on the ground, doing the work, who shared incredibly important in- insights to us. And I'm, I'm sorry you think that's a waste of your time. I, I actually don't, I, I think that's pretty important, esp- especially when math collapses in the state of Florida and has since two, two thousand and three.
Ms. Reynolds?
I think Lisa much more eloquently said exactly what I was trying to say, that I think these roundtables are supposed to be more staff-driven. Yes, if we want more, we should be asking for more information on how does this work. But I want the staff that is over this department to say, this is what we're doing, this is, you know, I want for them to bring in, this is what we're trying to model. Or this is who at the state that we, you know, we're getting feedback from, that type of feedback. It just, I think we'll find that people that we see at a conference that we're like, oh, that's really cool what they're doing. If we go and ask the person that's in charge of that department, they'll say, yes, we've looked at this company, but they charge, you know, a million dollars for ten students. Or they'll give us, they have a little bit more knowledge of the department. I think we hire some experts in their field. And I think it's a little bit disrespectful not to ask them to be leading the conversation in the field that they're experts in.
I just want to clarify, we've never had anyone that would have been a contracted.
Yeah, we've never done that. And to be, let me, I want, I have some comments I'd like to offer about this. We, we have routinely found ourselves in a situation where we're, we are not able to offer full board comments. We, we find ourselves in a situation, because you might recall, when I first started on the board, the board comments were first, so we always got through board comments. We moved them to the back because we, out of respect for the staff. But we found ourselves not getting through the board comments, not having, giving the board an opportunity to share their thoughts and concerns. And that's a great concern to me as board chair. So we, effectively what we did is on, on certain, certain occasions, we've added these roundtables to allow for, an opportunity for board members to share their concerns and thoughts. And as a, as a part of that, to expand and to allow board members to identify topics that were important to them and bring folks in to talk about those topics. Never, ever, ever have we precluded any staff under any circumstances. And certainly they're always welcome to come and speak, we encourage them to do so. I'm not sure where that comes from, but that, from my perspective, that was never the intent and we never intentionally did that. So I, I see it as an opportunity because we have, we, we used to do two board meetings a month, we don't anymore. It's just an opportunity to, to explore issues and concerns. And I, I, I'm going to take this a step further. We have added certain board members to this board over the past few years who, who have really, in my opinion, made this board a more proactive board. And, and I, I want to give our superintendent all the credit in the world for listening and to those folks and their expertise and their background and then acting on those things. I've seen this board, this school district come so far in the past several years since I've been on the board because of this collaboration. I believe it's a collaboration between our board and our superintendent and, and her staff. But I think to do that, to continue that, there has to be an open dialogue. And I see these, these, this is an opportunity for an open dialogue. So if we want to, if we want to adjust it a little bit and tweak it a little bit, we, we should do that. And as board chair, I'll do, of course, I'm going to do anything the board wants to do. But I see this as being an opportunity for us to find ways to better collaborate and have better discussions. Ms. Fortney?
Well, I was, yeah, I, I was at a requested meeting of some citizens of Borto that I know very well. And they, they pretty much don't like the roundtable. And, you know, my response was, I, I thought it was a unanimous vote and I thought it was the second vote that we took.
After chair.
After chair. I said, and, you know, if folks don't want to come, they don't have to come.
Can we invite them? I mean, that might be a city, I was so impressed that the chamber, the Lakeland Chamber president, the people we begged to be a part. of our school district.
Yeah.
City Commissioner of Lakeland, City Commissioner of BARTO, they were all in that. They were all engaged. They were interacting with what we were doing. Staff would have been a phenomenal addition to that, but I think there was something with they couldn't come or they were away on a conference. 'Cause I, I remember asking if they were gonna be available. But I thought, this is what we need. This is what, we need collaboration with, with the city. And we all, every one of us have like a different, uh, platform. You know, we have the arts, so we have, you know, and I, everybody knows I'm the E S C disability world. You know, and we have a teacher and we have Title I and, and accountant. Like, everybody has their own, you know, um, things they bring to the board. And if we could, you know, I don't wanna say it's all or nothing. It is about collaborative. Dr. Snaky, this is a big I E P meeting. You probably could give us all the training on how to behave. That is the first thing I thought of being a part of the board. Collaborative, everything I've learned in fifteen years of training for I E Ps, all this is, is a giant I E P meeting. And it's about working together. And so it's not, it's about collaboration and it needs to be. So I, that's what I want to see.
I wasn't quite finished.
Sorry, Fortney. You were laughing at me, so I had to, um, interject.
No, but, you know, I, uh, I just don't want it to, uh, drive a wedge.
Right.
And, uh, y- y- you know, I, I feel like, uh, that the master board training and, and I've said it numerous times, I do read everything. And it is a lot of, that's how I know that our folks work so hard, 'cause I do read it. And, uh, y- you know, um, I just don't want it to drive a wedge. But I also think it's beneficial, uh, if, if we could all, uh, play nice together. I, you know, but, um, but yeah, when you look out there and you see, see city commissioners and stuff like that, you know, I, I think it's, uh, I think it's, we have to do more of an us, uh, us instead of us versus, you know, each other. And I think that helps.
And I just need to clarify, it's really half I E P. It's half budget.
Okay. Well, that's part of the I E Ps.
Oh, okay. Ms. Cunningham?
Um, okay, so I've been going to the roundtables, 'cause it's an opportunity to learn. And with me, if I can have an opportunity to learn from somebody else, 'cause I don't know Lisa's world. And every time we do something and she speaks up, I learn something. You can't be a, you know, someone who knows everything about everything. Everybody, we kinda all have our niches, if you will, but we all learn from each other and we learn from the background that we bring. I don't have the same background that Sarah. I've never been a classroom teacher. So when she speaks up and says, "Hey, in my experience has been this," I'm like, "Wow, okay." I'd never looked at it from that perspective. So I see these as an opportunity to learn, period. So each time I've come, I've learned something. And the last one was absolutely phenomenal, so much so, got names and phone numbers and have passed along contact information to students. Because my goal is, if I can tell a student, here's a professor's name. If you're up at Florida State, you need to look him up, 'cause he's brilliant. He came and he talked to us similarly. Took the posters. We've passed it around to fellow science teachers, uh, put it up in their classrooms to try to engage ladies, young ladies, into STEM, which is one of the deficits that we face. So my experience with the roundtable has been very positive. Now, do I consider it a roundtable? I'll be honest with you. I consider it a glorified work session. I, I'm, I'm just, I'm just boiling it down. We finish the work session at eleven, tw- whatever, take a quick break for some lunch and then we get back. So it's the same thing minus, though, superintendent and staff, because that's kinda how it's evolved. Do I think that's good for business? Personally, I do not. I feel like it should be collaborative. I don't know who said it, but here we are. Probably you. Your word? Okay. So, um, I think it should be collaborative, because I would have loved, I saw so many teachers in the audience, um, that came up and said, "This is amazing. This is what, this is why I teach," she said to me. So it was an awesome program. Um, I wished everybody had heard it. And I felt like, yeah, it was a little of a disconnect to me, sitting back, 'cause we don't have staff in here, to take that professor's name in Tallahassee, to take that gentleman's name at U C F, the other profess- and work with those with our students. So I don't know what the answer is, but that's how I'm feeling. But I don't wanna miss out, because I learn so much every time. And that's why I make the time to stay or whatever. But I can't judge other people, 'cause you may have appointments and different things. We all live in a different world. I, I don't know, I don't know what it's gotta be called. What, would it be more beneficial to say, instead of having an agenda for a work session and an agenda for a roundtable, could we say, "Board members, there's seven of you. Can each of you, if you have a particular area that you want, like, more knowledge on, could you submit that to whoever?" Superintendent decides. Staff member puts it on the list. And then if she's got a contact, 'cause we're gonna be talking next month about civics, I'm just making it up, all right? So who's, who's got the interest in the civics and the background? Who are some key people we want there? Certainly, we want staff. Are there some people in the community? Whatever. So I don't know how we work that, but, like I said, to me, it's a glorified work session. Call it what you will, schedule it how you will. I'm gonna attend, 'cause I learn from other people. Um, and would love to continue it however we come up with it. But I would love to see us all be together, because you're gonna make a comment and I'm gonna go, "Wow, Sarah Beth, I never thought of it that way," or Ms. K- whoever. So I don't have the answer, 'cause we all feel differently about it. But I, I wish we could, like she said, collaborate, figure it out and move on, 'cause there's a lot of really great information we can learn from one another.
And, and I just wanna, excuse me, just a moment. Ms. Robinson, I just wanna offer this. We have had an agenda, um, that, but like all of our work sessions, we also offer board comments at the end. So oftentimes, what I think what folks are hearing are those board comments that come up at the, at the end that were not scheduled on the agenda, because we didn't know what they were gonna be. But we do, we have had an agenda for those. And I agree. I think it's just an extenuation and a glorified.
I do, I do.
Uh, work session that, um, just provides additional insight for us. Ms. Reynolds?
I was just gonna, the way that Lakeland does theirs, um, they essentially, if something comes up in the meeting, if they wanted more insight on what we just talked about with Lake Alfred or something like that. And it may be, you know, I heard Pasco County's doing it this way. Can you get somebody from Pasco County to come? Can we see what that, theirs looks like? Can you give us a little bit more information? And then they have it there next, I think, I don't know what they call workshop, whatever they call it.
Right, right.
Um, staff brings forward, "This is what you guys asked about. This is what it is. This is what Pasco's County's doing." If they want somebody from outside of the system to come in and present, then the board will ask for that to be part of the presentation. Um, but it's more staff-driven. Um, and I think by doing it that way, we're, A, guaranteed to have the staff members that.
Here.
Work with that group here. Um, but we also can see how it's playing in to our district in Polk. Um, Polk is a very unique place. I had a friend going to work for a legislator not that long ago who said, "I can teach you anything you need to know about Tallahassee out of college, but Polk County I can't teach." So I'm gonna hire you at twenty-one, because you understand Polk County and that's not something you can easily teach. Um, so I think having our people here too to say, "Okay, this is how it, it plays into Polk County" is crucial in making sure that we can implement these things.
And I will work more closely with the superintendent to make sure that we have staff here. And, and I, I will pledge that moving forward, to make sure that we're, I'm reaching out to the superintendent to make sure that everybody's schedules are coordinated.
But we have decided that that's what we're gonna do, 'cause we haven't done that up until now. So where's the disconnect?
Well, I think the staff was invited. There was some kind of a schedule. Schedule conflict.
Always, they're always, they're always invited. They're everything.
Ms. Wharton?
I just had, you know, I, I kinda look at this like, uh, my statement at the last work session about being the only board member that voted against the chief of staff. It doesn't mean I don't support the board together. I, I, just because I disagree and vote one way doesn't mean that I don't come as a united front. I think that's what we're lacking right here. I think that's evident, that we are lacking a united front.
And I think to, to me, we are in charge of setting policy and setting the direction of the district, setting the budget, but we have staff that are in charge of curriculum, that are in charge of discipline, those areas, that by bringing someone in and saying, "Okay, this is how you should be doing your job," would be like me bringing a science teacher into your classroom, Ms. Fortney, and saying, "This is how you should be teaching these kids." Um, so I think it's.
It's not been.
But that's not been that way. I think we all agree that staff, I think that we all agree staff should be involved. Certain people believe staff should lead it. Other people think that there's experts in the field that could suggest it should all be collaborative. I don't think it needs to be one way or the other. If you're having a conversation with the unit, then it's all about, everyone's there. I think in the past, it's been maybe conflict schedules. People didn't wanna do it. They weren't sure what it was gonna be. No one, I've never sat at one where somebody came in and said, "You're doing it wrong. Your staff is wrong. This is how you do it." It's always been very collaborative. And we missed a great P R moment of having city staff up, you know, involved with, with district. It would have been great to have our district staff there. But two days later, we released a press release on all the math numbers. Like, we were chasing what we were trying to do instead of working together. And I think that's just, you know, trying to get the picture. We are doing what we're supposed to do. But it was never one or the other. It was about, hey, this is what we could be. This is extra. This is what we could think outside of the box and do. And you have a different board, Mr. Wilson. You have people, we have some great people with a lot of knowledge and have a lot of experience. But you have board members who put out their cell phones, 'cause mine's gone off a hundred times this meeting. And our, you have Ms. Fortney, who's at everything and every school, very connected to what's happening in the community. And I think that's, we should build on that opportunity to create collaboration with the community and not say, you know, "It's us and them. It's this and that." It needs to be, it needs to be evolving into everyone, is my opinion.
Ms. Reynolds?
I just think this, that staff and any presenters coming in should be talking before they present to us, not us bringing in presenters to our staff, if that makes sense.
I don't know that that was ever done.
That's how, that's how it's been perceived by, that's the phone calls I've gotten, not just from people in that field, but also from guidance counselors and things like that, saying, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, we, you know, we try and put these kids in these class, but they wanna take dual enrollment."
And that may be the misunderstanding that some of the community members, because they had not attended and maybe that was, maybe that was it. I don't know. But I think we could move forward in a productive manner and do that. I don't, I don't think nobody's disagreeing here. It's just the how-to.
All right, Ms. Townsend?
I mean, I mean, I, I think all my colleagues said this is better than, than me. Thank, thank you. Um, I, the, for, for the record, the, the math and science round, roundtable was very important. I mean, I'm, I'm defensive of it. Yeah, I, I, I put a lot of work into getting those folks here. I did reach out way ahead of time. I was, in fact, I, I, I talked to Joe and some of the science guys back at the strategic roundtable and talked about how Professor Cottle had praised Polk County for expanding physics. I, I'm, I'm actually very pleased with the staff we have. I, the, the initial response I got was pretty good from them. Um, I, I, I know there were various con- conflicts and, and things. Um, uh, this was, has been from the beginning, is alternatively all, all, always a way to enrich what we're doing. Um, I think having you there would have been great to help enrich it. And, you know, I, I, we can str- structure this however we want to. I think we have to talk to, to each other like this. I think e- e- even if we disagree, there's, there's nothing wrong with disagreeing. You know, we, we get it out and we ta- talk about it. Um, we're, I mean, we're in war for our existence with, you know, with the, the current way this day's going. Um, we, we need to be colla- collaborating as much as poss- possible. And, and, and I just, uh, appre- appre- appreciate what all, what all, what all my colleagues have said, because like, like I said, I, I, I was a little snatched, abish with you, because I, I, I put a lot of work into that math and science, science thing. And it was meant to be supplementary. It was meant to help us establish a pipe, a pi- pipeline with someone whose job it is to help staff schools. I mean, we need math and science teachers. One of the people I brought here, that's what he does. He staffs schools. And, 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 you know, I think those are the kinda thing, "I'm trying to help," or, "We're, we're try- we're trying to help." But that specific thing was, was me trying, trying to help. I don't, I don't even have another one on the horizon. That was, that was the one that I had in mind. I, I look forward to everybody else's ex, 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 expertise. But I also like, I, I also would like the chance to talk to you about the things that are important for you outside of the framework of the intensity of this, right? Where, a- a- and so that's, that's what I would urge you to consider, that, that these things are actually meant to be collaborative. That's the per- the purpose. And, you know, I, I, I think we would do well to con- ta- con- ta- continue them. And staff is not only welcome, they're, they're encouraged. But I, I, I like the idea of us highlighting what's important to us.
Yes, please.
Um, I just, I, and I appreciate that. I, that's why I brought it up today, is 'cause I think there were several staff members that were slightly offended from the district level and from our schools, um, that I think it's important that they're part of that conversation. Just whatever's important to us, what, or it's me saying, you know, Brett, I want a disciplinary. I want, I wanna understand the discipline process, but making sure that he's part of the conversation. And I'm just using, using example.
I would like to understand that process.
Well, we, let me, let me say, I've listened carefully to every, what everyone said and I'll work more closely with the superintendent to find something that I think will work for all of us. It really is an extension of, of a work session, uh, with one exception. We, I heard very clearly that we wanted to also invite more public input. So I think that's the one piece that's a little different, because we have been open to, we allowed a lot of, we allowed everyone who wanted to come forward and talk about that matter to do so. So that's what I heard. We wanted, we wanted a little more public input. So other than that, it's really just a, an extended work session. And, and I'll make sure, I, I've heard, heard, Ms. Reynolds, I've heard your concerns and I'll make sure that, uh, I'm, I'm working closely with the superintendent and she, and her staff.
Time's up.
Can we hear from the superintendent there before we leave, like her? I mean, this is obviously, she has input on what we're doing here. Like, on what these could do for us in the future?
Um, I agree it should be something that involves staff. And I agree it should be something that if it needs to be more of an extension, such as if we want to learn about the units. And that's upcoming. That's something we can have a discussion about more in-depth. Um, and that way, they give staff time to plan it out. They gives them time to go through it, present it. And that gives you time to think about questions that you might want them to really dig deeper into. So I think it should be something that's already, it's a, it's an item that you wanna see forthcoming. If it's budget that's coming up, or if it's something, you know, in H R, whatever it is, it should be something that we can give them time and have staff to come. And you spend that time getting into that topic more deeply. And that way, they're not trying to figure out, okay, what, what's behind. And you say someone, their feelings were hurt. But we got great staff. I mean, we have some.
Yeah, I don't think anybody is discounting that. Yeah, I don't, so, but I think we should say, we have great, I ha- and I didn't hear that. I heard, so that's funny that we, you hear two different things. I heard the staff, um, no, I, some people calling me about A P and say, "Look, it does, this isn't working for us." So it started a conversation. But I think it shouldn't be limit, the idea is to get more information, collaborate with staff, who could be, uh, who could gain access or have more information. Even if we use an outside person, if it's a city, if we have the chamber come and talk about how we're gonna work together. We haven't done that before. Like, I don't wanna, I don't wanna singular it to just staff, even though staff needs to be involved and they are the experts.
We all have resources. Everyone, they have resources and contacts. You have resources and contacts. And so we know the levels that this board has when it deals with what, what are your, you know, what are your expertise areas? What do you have? And it might be something that we, you have someone that you wanna refer to us, you know, that we can bring into that conversation at that time. But to involve them is very important.
I agree.
Superintendent Burley, like the email I handed you, would that be an example?
Yes, that would be one.